...weather for heaven and... or even as we approach our consensus, I ask God that first of all, it's like that we're so grateful that we've not been hit with major storms in many years, and we ask God that you protect us again and to protect the region and keep the storms away. And we ask Father God that even as we decide on this important issue of renourishment, Father God, that you help us maintain our beautiful pristine beaches and that we make decisions that will, that, that will continue to help us in this area. We ask God that for all the other issues tonight, give us wisdom and guidance and let us make good common sense decisions in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. By the word of Jesus, a flagrant of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting to order. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We've got a lengthy agenda, but the first thing I was asked to do was to recognize the fact that one of my fellow commissioners, he is having a birthday today, but I can't tell you which one it is, but he wanted that out of the way, so happy birthday Commissioner Chapman. Okay. Mr. Jones, we have any additions or deletions?
Yes, sir. The only addition we have is on item D under admin, the approved resolution recognizing May 17th, 23rd as Public Works Week. We'd like to add to that, that you allow us to expend up to $1,500 for an appreciation lunch for the Public Works crew.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the additions and deletions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have...
A motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next on our agenda is a public comment period, and public comments at this point in time relate to agenda items specifically. If you want to talk about something that's not on the agenda, at the end of the meeting, you'll be given the opportunity to talk about whatever you want to talk about. But right now, if someone wants to speak about a specific agenda item, they can do it now, or you'll be given an opportunity also when that agenda item comes up. Okay? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Chairman, I'd like to just briefly...
And firstly, Dr. Leatherman, we have a habit here of providing the name to the clerk and the spelling of the last name so I get accurate.
Yes, my name is Stephen Leatherman, S.T.E.P.H.E.N., L.E.A.T.H.E.R.M.A.N. And I'd just like to make a few brief comments.
Okay. Which, which agenda item are you going to address, sir?
Well, I'm talking, information I think is useful for the, for the easement.
Okay, well, you want to talk about the easement letter?
No, I do not.
Okay, well, right now, the agenda item pertaining to the easement is the easement letter, and I know we had talked previously that if you want to talk in general about the project, that at the end of the meeting, each person will have a chance to have five minutes to talk about their issues on that.
Okay, that's really what I want...
So, that's where you want to go is then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Beach, that's probably my fault, because I told you to get up before everybody gets worn out, so I apologize for that. We'll be stay tuned for the end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item we have is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda, we have a brief presentation from the Florida Department of Transportation. Ms. Virgie Bowen is here.
Yes, thank you. Virgie Bowen.
Put your microphone down, too. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you and make this presentation today. I'm Virgie Bowen. I work with the Florida Department of Transportation and the Planning Department in the Chipley Office, District Three. But this year, the Florida Department of Transportation is updating their Florida Transportation Plan and their Strategic Intermodal System Policy Plan. And what I wanted to do today is just briefly explain what the Florida Transportation Plan is, and we refer to it as the FTP, and the Strategic Intermodal Policy Plan, we refer to as CIS or SIS. And chances are, some of you may have already seen or heard this presentation before, we are going out to all the county commissions in our district and making this presentation, as well as to the TPOs and the Planning Council, so chances are, some of you have already heard this presentation, but for the benefit of those who have not, I'll do that now. The Florida Transportation Plan is Florida's long-range transportation plan, and it's a plan for all of Florida, not just the DOT. It provides our policy guidance and the policy framework for the allocation of federal and state funds that flow through our five-year work program. It provides a policy framework in addition for the expenditure, well, I already said that, of state funds, but it also gives policy direction for all of our transportation partners for completing our transportation goals, objectives, and our plan. The Strategic Intermodal System is the state's largest and most strategic transportation facilities, including airspace, water, rail, and highway facilities, and it's the primary means by which we move people and goods throughout the very diverse regions of Florida, outside of Florida, and even outside the United States. The CIS is also Florida's strategic highway priority for transportation capacity improvements. And the policy plan sets the guidelines and decisions about which facilities are designated as part of, as part of the Strategic Intermodal System, and also where future CIS investments should occur, and how to set priorities, given our limited funding. The CIS strategic plan includes designation criteria, needs assessment, prioritization process, and finance strategy. Both of these documents, both the Florida Transportation Plan and the Strategic Intermodal System Policy Plan, will be updated by the end of 2015, and in preparation for this update, there's been many different areas that are being discussed and addressed, such as technology changes, demographics, travel trends, and behavior economics. All of these things influence our transportation, our transportation policy and our investment. Looking for commonalities or convergence across these issues will be the focus of our policy development. During this planning cycle, both of these documents will be updated by the end of 2015. During the development of our policy framework, there's been multiple partner briefings and summits. There was a statewide summit that was held this past December in Orlando. We also had a regional summit held in Port Walton Beach this past February that was held in, in our region. There will be a statewide policy summit probably in August in our area. The dates we're looking at right now are August 10th, 11th, or 12th. We don't know which one it will be for sure, but on our website, we, when that date is confirmed, we'll have it posted there where you can have that information. We'll have our draft updates available in the fall, and then, of course, we'll go for adoption by the end of 2015. There is more additional information that you can find when you go to our website. It's just very simply called thefloradetransportationplan.com. I don't know if any of you have visited that website so far, but there are about six short video clips that are very interesting, talking about transportation needs across our state, and I think if you'll go take a look at those, you'll find them, find them very interesting and informative. But also, you can use the website to give additional comments for what you would like to see for our future transportation. This plan's going to go out 50 years, so any additional comments that you would like to give, you can either give it in person. Amy Wee Wee is with me, and she will be glad to write down any comments that you might wish to make now, or if you wish to make comments on our website, you can do that, or you can email them, and so we'll be happy to hear any comments. Do you have any questions at this time right now?
In our packets, we received a public comment form. Will these be available for the, the public to also fill out?
I have some extras, and I can definitely leave some for the public to fill out.
Thank you.
That's a great, great question.
Commissioners, any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much. If you'll make those available for the public, if they've got comments, questions, they can leave them.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, next item is regarding your approval of a staff workshop on May 19th to discuss the NERTA Phase III proposed early restoration project. This is part of the process of involving the public in this NERTA process. You have listed there the projects that will be discussed, so we recommend you approve staff to move forward with that workshop on May 19th.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further board comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last board meeting, we, you directed staff to review the property located at 233 North Fifth Street in Defeniac Springs that had been made. The board had been made aware that that property was for sale. It is adjacent to some of our other properties there in the courthouse area. We had staff review that. There's about a 10,000 square foot building on it that really would only be of use to us for storage. At this time, we wouldn't recommend moving forward with the procurement process, however, if the boards saw that, there may be some value in that, the real estate there for future expansion. We could certainly move to the next step, which would be get appraisals and determine a selling price, but right now, our recommendation is that we really don't have any use for it, that it would fill any need we have today.
Mr. Chairman, if I may understand that, Mr. Jones, the thing about it is, we've got a courthouse that is busting at the seams up there, and there's probably be some movement in a few years to expand it, and I'm just kind of looking at if we did in fact purchase this particular, particular piece of property, that it would give us additional parking if the current parking be north of the courthouse is used for further expansion, and it might be best to try and lock that in at a lower rate or pay at this time, instead of waiting five or eight years down the road.
One of the things about where my office is located, you know, it was an old house and is rather old. At some point, it could be torn down in either another county, a bit taller county building built there, or it could be used for parking, although it does slope. It's like this one, it does slope gently downhill, but that's a, that's a half of lot, and then on the other half is the, it's where the sheriff used to do y'all's vehicles, and I don't even think we use that much anymore, so that whole, we own that whole lot, don't we?
Yes, ma'am.
But you may be right, we may need parking something.
We can certainly move forward and at least, you know, do a due diligence and see what the appraisals, values are and what they're looking to receive and sell. You know, it cost us a few thousand dollars, but it may be certainly worth that.
So the next step would be an appraisal, and then we can talk to the owner.
Yes, ma'am.
Negotiate, so I, I certainly favor that. I think now is, you know, a great time to look at the best deals we can get for future.
Okay, so your direction is to go ahead and let's take at least a step to see what the appraisal would come back at.
Correct.
And at that point in time, we'll do some further evaluation.
We will bring that value back to you, and we'll move forward.
Okay, so you have that direction.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioners, next item is regarding recognizing May 17th through 23rd as Public Works Week, and as we added to the agenda, your approval will allow us to spend up to $1,500 for an appreciation luncheon for those folks.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Is Wilmer here?
Carry it back.
I would like, that is also EMS week, so we could combine the two.
Yeah, I've got this coming up next, and we'll invite them to lunch.
Wilmer, I just wanted to say thank you for you and your crews for the fine job they do throughout the county, but in particular, also in my district, and I, I'm glad to see we have this on, and then we will call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item is regarding a similar resolution recognizing May 17th, 23rd as Emergency Medical Services Week, and with your approval and the funding for the last, we will invite these folks to lunch at the same place, same time.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Is Bobby Martin here? Bobby, as we mentioned to Wilmer, we thank you very much for the service that you've done for the county, gone to great lengths to improve it and do things that are done the right way, so we thank you very much. So all of us in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
And we'd like to recognize, for the folks that don't know, down here, Bobby is our new fire chief for Walton County. We appreciate his service.
Thank you.
Commissioners, next item is regarding RFP number 015-014 for security monitoring systems to award a contractor Siemens Industries. We went out there since to monitor the alarm systems in this building in the courthouse. We'd gone out before, and we only had one responsive bidder, and we found that firm to be lacking in their financial condition. We went back out to be at Siemens, replied, we believe we've got a good company with a good rate at this time, so we'd recommend we approve that.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Chapman.
Does anybody here from purchasing that can maybe answer my questions? I'll throw it out to you, Mr. Jones, or...
Sometimes we'll fire down there.
Rick, I noticed on the tabulation sheet that they, $105 per hour for maintenance calls, and it says normal business hours.
Sure, yes, sir.
What about after hours?
Well, after hours, that'll be a different story, but really, our needs are Monday through Friday. We have, very rarely have after hours calls, and the reason we ask for them to give us a set price is that we're getting gouged left and right, the high prices for, just to come out on Monday through Friday. We can ask them to give us the price for after hours calls that'll, you know, make the board feel more comfortable, but we're saving a good bit of money here. We've got a reputable company and that will come in a responsive time, give us a window that they will be here to fix our problems, instead of waiting weeks and weeks for someone from Alabama to come, or someone from Pensacola.
Where are they based now?
They're based out of Fort Walton Beach, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Perhaps, should have mentioned this while Rick was there, but congratulations to he and Amy on a new baby born yesterday. Congratulations.
Next item is we're asking to approve an ill local agreement with West Florida Regional Planning Council and task assignment for the 38 Transit Study. This document was presented a couple of meetings ago. At the last meeting, we approved the funding for it, and today, we're just asking you to approve the execution of this, so they can get busy about the transit study.
Yeah. It shouldn't actually be called the Walton County Transit Study. It just keeps getting 38 attached to it, but it is actually the Walton County Transit Study.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, Commissioners, is to add an additional security camera to the District Two Commissioner's office. We've got good coverage there, but there are some places, and due to the proximity of the office to the park and the high school, we think a little better coverage would serve our security interests better, so we just ask you to approve that item.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is regarding the stormwater project assessments. Some, six months ago, we awarded three projects to our consulting engineers with a six-month timeframe to do, study and assess the basin areas, particularly in South Walton. I believe there were 57 of those. Those projects are complete. We have two in hand, and one should be here tomorrow or Thursday. We're just seeking your direction. Probably, staff is going to begin reviewing them, and if you want them to bring back recommendations, we can certainly do that to prioritize. The three engineering firms are prepared, if you so wish, for them to come to a particular meeting to do presentations, or a combination of the above. We just, they're here, we don't want them sitting on a shelf, so we just want to see what direction you'd like to go.
I'd like, I'd like Public Works to come by and meet with each of us and kind of give us a, kind of a, you know, an idea about them, and then, at one meeting, have the engineers come to answer questions from the public or us.
We'd be glad to do that. Okay. I think that's a good direction.
Okay. Next item, we're just going to give you a little update on what's going on in Malsi Head at the industrial park. The site you see there, and we'll take some action, you'll see here in just a moment. This is the distribution center site that we're still having closed on, but they're firm enough in their belief that it's going to happen, that they're out there clearing property. We told them, we didn't mind. If they don't buy it, we'll have some cleared property, but we're anticipating that closing in the near future. And while you can't see a lot there, that's the Empire Truck Site. Their slab is in, and they should be going vertical with the building within the next couple of weeks. The I-10 Truck Site, which is the sales site, the formerly I-20, their slab is in as well, and they'll be going vertical. The sweep-in is, I suppose they'll open sometime mid to late summer. It's kind of long looking good. Southern Tire Mark Site, we should be getting, if we've not gotten their developments and submittals in the next couple of weeks, they're moving forward. They had a couple of design issues they were working on last time I spoke with them, but they're on track to get their development up and moving. The Substation County Office Site, I believe they poured a slab yesterday, or getting ready to pour, but I think they poured it yesterday, so it's coming out of the ground looking nice as well. And the wastewater treatment facility is moving along at a good pace. I told the guy that's building that, that that's where I wanted to go in a storm, and he said, there wouldn't be but one problem with it, and I'll share that with you individually if you'd like to hear what that problem was. So anyway, there's a lot going on out there. If you're out in the area, stop by and just kind of look around. It's, it's a busy place. The traffic light is due to be installed at the intersection over the service road in 285 sometime in June. So just to brief update of the activities out there.
You also have the baked goods distribution facility.
Yes, sir. Still at the other end, and they're, we're working to get the roadway completed into their project now.
And where do we stand on a restaurant?
We're getting their project roadway into that other project as we move forward. As soon as, the restaurant is a loves project. They told us soon as they finish the hotel, they're going to move forward with the restaurant.
Thank you.
Now, whose district is that? Just had to say that.
Is that it?
Yeah, it sat there for years until he got in office, too.
Yeah, we couldn't get the guy out there to move, I think. You make him county administrator, and look what happens. Thank you. Is that all your stuff?
Yeah, we've got, now we've got some more things. The next item is a 30-day extension to Regional Development Group. Regional Development took SAD's position in the distribution center. Their current, they've extended their agreement one time for 30 days. This is a second 30-day extension. They paid us $5,000 bucks to do this and have executed their agreement, so we would certainly recommend your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the next item is regarding invitation to bid 015-024 for improvements at the County Road 395 and US 98 intersection. That project went out to bid. We only received one responsive bidder. I know there's, they showed two there, but the CW Roberts failed to put in their bid bond, so they were deemed non-responsive, but they were both considerably higher than what our anticipated cost would be. We're recommending that we reject those bids. There's actually a couple of things we may want to redesign on the project before we go back out to bid in dealing with the, the bike path, so this, that would be our recommendation.
Motion to reject the bids and re-advertise.
You know, this is, this has been going on for at least two and a half years. Could we, you know, get this, get this out to bid and get it back and get going, because I know that there may be some tweaks in the sidewalk thing, but...
Yes, ma'am.
It shouldn't materially affect the, really, the cost of the whole thing, so...
Okay, we'll give it a post haste.
There's 75 cars lined up there, probably right about now that are cursing all of us, so...
I understand. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Are any other board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is regarding the 38 parking between Defeniac Street and Western Lake Bridge. Purple Ridge is designing the infrastructure in the bridge. We believe it'd be prudent for them to pull this project into that design as well, so we're requesting awarding $25,500 to Purple Ridge for the part design and development of the parking improvements, along with the, on the north side of 38 at the Western Lake Bridge area.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioners, if you recall, on February 26th of this year, we had a motor grader involved with a vehicle in an accident on US 331. That motor grader was, was totaled, and earlier in your consent agenda, you accepted a, an offer to settle that, I believe it was $136,000 some dollars. This request is to replace that motor grader with a 2004 Caterpillar 140H, and at the cost of $220,063, of which, $136 will be paid out of the settlement of that damaged grader, so we would recommend your approval.
And the, the rest is in the Public Works budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other board comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, regarding our agreement with Chelco Services, Inc. They provide line spots for us on a contract basis. The only change is they are changing their name to Southland Utility Services. Just need your approval to change their name in our contract and documents. Shall move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is regarding your authorization to fund and field a Planner One position. This will be a new FTE that will work as a planner to do some front-end work, take some load off the senior planners who are working diligently on our planning projects, but the idea behind this position is to have someone to field phone calls, answer questions, and to do some preliminary work before we get into the meat of these projects. It is a, a new FTE. We will fund this position through the revenue that's been generated through increased fees, which through mid-April has been about almost $90,000, with 86 some, so we'll certainly generate enough revenue through the new fee structure that we put in place early, late last year to pay for this position, and that's quite frankly the reason we ask you to increase those fees, as we knew the workload was going to be moving forward and give us the opportunity to generate the appropriate revenue to pay for those resources.
Motion.
To approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other board comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item, we're asking to go out for a request for qualifications for transportation planning consultant services in preparation to update the Walton County Comp Plan, the transportation element. In our recent discussions, when we've talked about some changes that we may need to make to development procedures and criteria, one of the issues that comes up quite often is prop share, impact fees. This will give us the ability to move forward if we so choose to look at redefining how we're doing prop share, prop fair share funds and/or impact fees. We won't take any action to move forward until we determine that, but this will put us in a position that if we so choose to, we'll be ready to move.
And the funding would be the prop share account?
Yes, ma'am.
Which, which account?
Well, I would think we would divide it up amongst the different ones proportionally.
Can you use it to take an updated study?
As far as I'm aware, yes, ma'am, the statute allows us to do that.
Would this committee tell us what roads are constrained and, and then recommendations on projects that we could do, like a connector road or something? Do they go into depth?
Yeah, we can, we can make it as narrow or as broad as you'd like. What we're, what we're wanting to do is just do the RFQ very broad and determine who must fit our needs if and when we choose to move forward with either a narrow scope or a broad scope.
What's wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that's all we have.
Mr. Bagby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First item on our agenda is request approval of and authorize the chairman to sign a contract with TripAdvisor. I want to thank John Irvin and his team, Zinder in particular, and their team, our agency, and the two attorneys, Mark Davis and Clay Atkinson, worked really hard. You know, you see, one of the things, one of our neighboring destinations is most proud is that they were ranked number one in TripAdvisor. They did that because we didn't have an account, and so a lot of our sub-accounts hotels here were, were used to beef them up. And so we're got, we went out and we're gonna try to make this the number one destination on TripAdvisor.
Yes.
What's wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For the updates, we got the March bed tax numbers, you know, that's the college spring break month, so we were down 1.62%. For the year, we are up 13.84%, and we expect a strong April and a strong May. There are a couple of things that came up, I believe, at the last meeting that we were asked to address. One was the parking citations. Last year, you remember all the parking problems that we had, and we discussed several parking solutions, and one of those was sending the code enforcement officers to certification training so that they could write parking tickets. That will not be their primary job, and it won't be their secondary job. It'll be like all other code violations. If they're called, if there's somebody, if a citizen identifies a parking violation, they'll go verify that or, and address that situation. But their hierarchy is real simple. First is to educate violators, and that, whether it's parking violations, or turtle lighting violations, or any other violation that they deal with, that's their primary responsibility. Their secondary responsibility is to ensure voluntary compliance, so that they will talk to the folks and, and try to get them to voluntarily comply. And then, of course, the third option, unfortunately, would be to issue the citation, just like they would issue any other citation that they have the authority to do. Some things that you've identified, blocking handicap accesses and things, will obviously be a priority for them. We don't want a car that's blocking a beach access, a handicap access to a beach, but they won't be on the top side. They, they belong down on the beach unless they're called by a citizen and there's an actual complaint. So subject to your questions, that's kind of our update on the parking citation.
I do, I do have a question on that.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see something written as to the specific citations that will be addressed, because there's a lot of gray areas out there in parking. We get calls all the time. It's kind of a decision that somebody's gonna have to make, whether the parking there is, is allowed and whether it's not. So the other areas, I don't have a problem with, it's the gray areas that I think that we're going to get into the weeds. And so I think we need to have a specific list of, of parking violations that, that they're gonna be looking for.
And I will gladly, I'll, I'll work with the sheriff, because I, if I understand your question, probably the, the problems we've had is allegations that, well, I called the sheriff and they wouldn't write a parking ticket. And I don't know if they were on another call or what they were doing, or that the sheriff, you know, some deputy so-and-so told me that they couldn't enforce that sign because it didn't have the ordinance on it. Let me get with the attorneys and the sheriff's office and, and get a comprehensive, this is, this is what the policy is for parking tickets. I'll gladly do that.
Yeah, and just make sure, because what we have now is we have a lot of parking in the right of way.
Right.
And we have some cases where it's safe and allowed, and then other cases where it's kind of gray, and then other cases where, so I can see that really becoming a, and they'll start calling you saying, why aren't you giving tickets out? So I'd like to see that kind of
Yes, ma'am.
solidified before they, before they start writing tickets.
Okay. The next item that we were asked to address was the beach vending. You, you passed the changes to the beach activities ordinance. We have a meeting scheduled with the vendors on 14 May. So after 14, and the effective date, we have, you had made one May, but we're still waiting on a couple of parcels to make sure that we're, we're absolutely clear on what is public beach and what is unknown beach in front of people's houses, as it's listed in the, the property appraiser's website. So our, our plan, subject to guidance from y'all, is on May the 22nd, after we've had an opportunity to brief the vendors, on May the 14th, after we've had an opportunity to distribute the breakouts where the 50% rule is to the vendors, and, and make sure that the upland property owners verify that in those places where there are upland property owners, they have signed off on vending in front of their properties to start enforcing May 22nd, which would be the Friday before Memorial Day. And then we would enforce, obviously, from there on with that. If we don't get resolution on, I think we're down to eight, maybe eight parcels, then our, most of those are in front of a house, so unless the upland property owner has, has allowed it, then we won't allow vending there. If the upland property owner has allowed it, then they would be the determinant anyway, and so we would allow it. And we wouldn't do the 50% rule on those beaches that we cannot prove are not public, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. And just one last update, we've had film crews in the last couple of weeks. We had PBS had a film crew in Seaside. They were filming Seaside, which, for one of the 10 towns that changed America. And then we had something y'all had previously approved. The Golf Channel was in town, doing some great work with John and his team, and we expect to see that aired in the fall. I don't have an air date for the Seaside PBS series, because Seaside was the first of the 10 towns that they were coming in to film. Subject to your questions, that's all we have.
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Mrs. Hildreth, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Come up the podium. And as with others
I had two questions, will you please consider the
Ask the chair and we'll pass.
I'm sorry. Did I do that? I'm sorry.
That was one of your questions.
I think lightning struck. I wanted to ask if you would please consider certain subdivisions. My subdivision, Blue Mountain Beach, does not allow to, our property, property owners to give permission for vending. We have no commercialization. Will you please keep that into consideration?
Okay.
And the second thing was about the parking. When you're doing the parking, will you please consider that some neighborhood plans have parking specifics in their neighborhood plan, which you all have approved? Please consider that.
Mr. Bagby, can you address that?
Sure, sure, we'll be glad to. I'm not sure if we can enforce the upland property owner, but they shouldn't be giving that permission. But we know about this neighborhood now, so I'll make sure that, you know, the neighborhood or that someone doesn't give permission. And then on the parking, I'm not sure, but I, I think that will be sitting down with the sheriff and with the attorneys, because the attorneys know all the neighborhood plans, and if there's any parking restrictions or parking allowances or whatever, I would, I would look at them to provide us guidance on, don't write any tickets in this neighborhood. I, I know all the new urbanist communities have private streets, so we wouldn't be writing tickets in there anyway. So.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bagby.
Yes, sir.
Major Preston. We've been talking about this parking issue for over a year.
Yes, sir.
And I think it's high time that the two entities that have to deal with the enforcement to get together, put this thing to paper, and let's put it to bed, because it just keeps going on and on and on. And I don't know where the breakdown is or slowdown is, but let's work together and get this thing accomplished, please.
We'd be happy to work with you.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Hildreth, yes, ma'am.
My second question is, is it our responsibility to get to these gentlemen what they need to know, like on a neighborhood plan or?
I believe you said that they already have that.
Yes, thank you, though.
Thank you, Mrs. Hildreth. Thank you, Mr. Bagby.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have a few items. The first is request the board to approve the proposed final order in for the Chateau 30-A Hampton Inn redesign major development order and authorize the chair to sign the order. This is, and Commissioner Commander was not present for the quasi judicial hearing, so she would not be able to vote on this. This is the written order that resulted from the motion and the second on the hearing that we had. And I'm just asking you to approve it as written, and unless you see a mistake or something I left out, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other board comment?
There seems to be some confusion. I've, I've been getting several calls about a moratorium on 38, and there's, you know, it's, we're only addressing the Hampton in this, so I just wanted to make, you know, clarify that.
Commissioner, for purposes of legislative intent, yes, this order only addresses the, the development order request for Hampton Inn located on Highway 38 in Seagrove Beach.
We have a motion and a second, any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioners, sometime back, you tasked our office to prepare a hurricane and storm damage reduction project cover letter to go to the beachfront homeowners, excuse me, beachfront property owners identified by the Tristoke Council's title searches. The cover letter would cover the easement that's being proposed. There have been several drafts. The latest draft, the one you have in your book, has been signed off on by the Corps' attorney, and it's the letter that I'm recommending to you to do.
Okay.
Question on that letter. At the last meeting, I suggested that instead of saying that we are undertaking a project, that we say we're considering a, a hurricane-storm reduction project. That, that was a
Commissioner, I must have left that change out of the last draft.
Did you? Yeah, I think you did. I just wondered if there was some problem with it or something.
No, no.
And also, too, the proposed project would restore approximately such and such, instead of will restore. So it, it would restore, because we're saying that it's, we're considering. Is that, is that, is that okay?
I have no objections.
Does that, does that work? And then the date on the, did anybody say anything about the date?
No, they were, in fact, I meant to say that, they asked me to basically ask you, what, what date do you want to put in there? I know that in the past, there's been a pretty good lag time, as much as six months.
Yeah, I would say six months. I would say Wednesday, November 16th, which would be middle of the week, and, you know, it'd be six months. I mean, that, that's my proposal, whatever y'all want.
Certainly fine with me.
So your motion with the two wording changes and the date of November 16th, is that your motion?
Well, if we want a motion right now, yeah, that would be my motion, yeah.
Before we can do any discussion, we need a motion and a second.
Yeah, my motion would be that those two changes add the date of November 16th, 2015, you know, 5:00 PM, if you have to put a time on it, and then, and that would be it. That would be my motion.
Thank you.
Do I have a second? We have a second. Okay, Commissioners, further discussion?
I can't remember how much, give me an estimate of what this is gonna cost.
I, I think we approved at the last meeting, the expenditure of approximately $50,000, and I can't remember if that's correct, but I believe that is, $50,000. Where's Jim?
$50,000.
Yeah, Jim's shaking his head, yes.
Commissioners, any other comments before I take couple of comment?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll research at the end.
Okay. Mr. Hildreth? And Mr. Hildreth, a reminder that we're dealing just with the cover letter.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, absolutely. The
Go ahead and spell your last name for the court, please.
Emmett Hildreth, H-I-L-D-R-E-T-H, Blue Mountain Beach, citizen, Walton County, Florida, United States of America. On the cover letter, the cover letter, this is a request, and I request that the cover letter address further dealing with the sand. And I quote you from the cover letter, "The proposed project will restore approximately 3 million cubic yards of sand." I request that the cover letter further tell the public and the Walton County taxpayer how much it's going to cost for that. Now, there's been a very good article written on April the 24th by Bud and Ellie today, and I want to pass it, except I've got eight copies, one for the attorney, one for the county, and I'm afraid of five county committees. Give me one for the last.
Sure, sure.
And one for the record.
Mr. Hildreth, Mr. Hildreth, please stick with the letter that's at hand.
I'm picking with the sand, the sand that's in the letter.
Okay, and the, Mr. Hildreth, as we talked before the meeting, the issue at hand right here, right now, is the cover letter.
Is the cover letter.
And you've made, Mr. Hildreth, you've ma, you've made a recommendation for your change, and we're listening to that, but this is a different matter you've got here.
I'm making a recommendation that the cover letter add the cost to a statement that 3 million cubic yards of sand. It also says it's a Walton County project, it's your project. So if you look at the Corps of Engineer, cost engineering estimate on it, it goes up to $240 million. If the county is obligated for half of that, that's approximately $120 million. That should be included in the cover letter with the statement on the sand, that's the cost of the project, which is your project by the letter. Now, the figures put out by Dave of Bud and Ellie was $170,197,000. And, you know, at the very least, you could put out that the county, Walton County's gonna be obligated for $85,98,500. Now, those figures do not include the cost of American government services corporation cost, which is $244,000 plus the $60,000 you authorized last time we met. All of these cost figures, which, a cost figures that the Walton County taxpayers gonna have to pay, should be included in the cover letter. People should know the cost. And I think it's, I don't think it's appropriate not to define the cost figures for the sand, the sand in the letter, the cover letter. And that's what I'm talking about. The other thing in the cover letter that should be included in there is what I mentioned to you before. Enforcement's gonna be by the Department of Justice if you give them all of the power. Now, the cover letter says power granted to the county and power passed on to the United States Government, the Corps of Engineers. But if you read the easement, that is not correct. Walton County retains half of all the power. The word "together" is used in the easement. That would mean you keep half of it and they get half of it. You may pass power to them, but you certainly in the easement keeping half the power. So I would suggest that being a correction in the letter to define the correct proportion of power, along with the enforcement. And the money is important to taxpayers. So I don't think we can keep it a secret any longer, the enormous cost of this project. Now, if you take the words of the chief of the cost engineering Now, if you take the words of the chief of the cost engineering of the U.S. Corps of Engineers, he says, "Fully funded might require as much as $240 million." Walton County, $120 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hildreth. Other comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kent Safriet with the Law Firm of Hoppy Green in Sanms on behalf of numerous beachfront landowners representing approximately 5,000 linear feet of beach.
Spell your last name for the record, please.
S.A.F.R.I.E.T. I previously sent the commission and Mark a red line draft of some edits that I had based on my comments at the last meeting, as well as Commissioner Meadows' comments and some others. The first point that I'll make is the addition that I put towards the end of page two, and that is, the way it's drafted now, it's if you wish to participate, send it back, and that's it. Well, how about if you don't wish to participate, let the county know? So add in a paragraph that said, "If you do not wish to participate in this project, write 'no' across the easement, send it back in the stamped address envelope that the county provides with it." That way, the county will get it back and they'll know. Property owner A, B, and C say no, D, E, and F say yes, or we haven't heard from G, H, and I. It's for information, you're sending it out anyway. Why send a package to a person three times over during this period if they're not going to sign it? And you would know that at the first end. It's efficiency and it's common sense to me, so I would recommend that change. Second, the, the word "standard," and I noted this in my comments, the word "standard easement" enclosed as a standard storm damage reduction easement. That is extremely misleading. There ain't nothing standard about this easement or this project. That easement has gone through at least a year's worth of workshops, been modified four, five, or maybe even six times between the Corps, the landowners, and the TDC. Language is being inserted in there by the county that's not in any of the other Corps' easements from New Jersey or anywhere else. So it's not standard by, by any means whatsoever. And lastly, the six-month lag period that, that you have proposed, extremely too long. What, what do we need six months for? If there's all of this support from the beachfront landowners that is claimed to be, it didn't take them six months to sign the easement and get it back. They can do that within 30 days, easily. So why are we dragging it out for six months? Is that because we're going to send it out one, two, three, four, five times, go door to door and, and knock on their doors to try to, beg them to sign the easements like what happened in the prior project? No, we don't need six months. Let's bring this process to a conclusion. Let's make it 60 days max, get whatever easement you get in, let's look at the map, see who's in, who's out, and let the Corps determine whether they've got a viable project in any area, and let's move forward. But there's no need to drag this thing out for six months because, again, if people are going to sign it, they're going to sign it, you know, when they get it. They're not going to hold it for five months and, and sign it, you know, on the last day and send it in. Thank you.
Yeah. One thing about that six-month is because we have so many people who live overseas, they might live, you know, they're traveling, they're in the United States, they live different places. The six-month was really to give people the opportunity to read it, review it with whoever they wanted to, and get it back. So, you know, when you send somebody something and say, "Have it back in 30 days," I mean, a lot of people are traveling, they might be ill, they might have an ill relative. I was just thinking that that would give people enough time to get their documents for us to, to get back, the ones that came back as return addresses and such. And that's the reason for the six months. Not, not so that it would drag it out, but so that it would give people an adequate amount of time to deal with this issue with all the other things that they're dealing with in their lives.
Well, well, I guess that begs the question, is the county going to send out just one round of easements? If they're going to send out one round and wait six months, okay, but if they're going to send out another round, why send out another round when you have it?
No, it was never, it was never my understanding that we were going to keep sending them out. We're sending them out one time, my understanding, and give them an adequate time period to, if they're traveling, if they've got family issues going on, to deal with this, this easement.
And I would highly recommend the language, and I think, Commissioner Meadows, you suggested this language too last time, that there be, if you, if you don't wish to participate, indicate that you don't wish and mail it back to the county with no.
So with this language, if you do not wish to sign the easement, please write "no" across the easement?
Across the front of it and then send it back to the county, and the county will know.
Across the front of the easement and return it.
Yeah, that property owner will know, or the county will know that property owner doesn't wish to be included in the project.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Commissioner, my only hesitation about that frankly was just, and this sounds lazy, and I don't mean for it to be, but it's going to be our job to keep up with them, and sometimes you have the problem of people sending back, they'll make a copy, send one back that says "no," and one they've signed. That was my only concern, and I, I don't mean for that to sound like that's a bigger deal.
I thought we had discussed about them going to someone else, a third party, to have the third party count them in and assemble them.
We did discuss that, and I, I don't know that we actually have discovered anybody who would do that just yet, but we'll, we'll look at that.
Okay.
That would be, I would prefer that frankly than us.
And wouldn't you say, if it's a two-page document, I think you need to write it across the, the first page, the front page?
On the easement, please write "no" across.
Yeah, you've got to be specific with people.
That's what my proposed language said.
The first page of the document.
The first page of the easement document?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's continue to get public comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you.
And, and by the way, Mr. Safriet, I don't have any problem striking the word "standard." Frankly, the Corps and I went back and forth a little bit on that. I don't have any...
We'll come back to your motion in a bit, the cover letter, or the changes we're going to make. Ms. Harris.
Mark, it's my understanding in the letter...
Ms. Harris, go ahead and address me and I'll...
Oh, I'm sorry. Suzanne Harris, spelled H.A.R.R.I.S. Bill, in the letter, it says that Mark can't give legal advice and you should consult your attorney, which I agree with completely. But then he also gives advice and says, "If you're a condominium, you should check your condominium documents." Well, there is Florida law that overrides condominium documents, so I really think that needs to be checked before any easement's sent out because it's my opinion that is bad advice to condominiums. If there is a law that says, "My, I cannot as president of Edgewater Beach, sign based on what our condo documents say," then I think y'all need to research that and you need to know the facts before you put in there, look at your condo docs. Because in my opinion, that is giving legal advice, look at your condo docs, whatever they say, then you can do. And it's my opinion that there is a Florida law that overrides that, so...
Actually, I slightly disagree. What the letter says, if, if you're receiving this letter and accompanying documents as a member or representative of a condo or homeowner association, then you should consult your attorney. I'm not telling them to consult their docs, I'm telling them to consult their attorney. If they receive the letter as a condominium SOA or HOA representative, they should go consult their attorney. That's what the letter says.
Okay, so you're not putting in, consult your documents?
No, no, and then, and then the association consult their attorney and guiding documents. That's, go, go see your attorney.
I think you need to add, "Not consult your attorney and guiding documents." I think you need to add, "In Florida law."
Well, I'll leave that to the attorney. I'm not going to tell them.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Ms. Hildreth, did you, you had your hand up. Did you still want to speak?
Yes, I just wanted, excuse me, let me go with H.I.L.D.R.E.T.H. I wanted a clarification because we did talk about mailings and, and somebody referred to how many times earlier, y'all had had to send things back, and it's going to be one mail act, right? One time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's true?
Yeah, yeah, that was always the intent.
Leonard Anderson, A.N.D.E.R.S.O.N. I'd like a, I'd like a clarification, if I could. Is this letter going out to every individual condominium owner or to homeowners associations? And it makes a big difference on Blue Mountain Beach where we have, for instance, in my condominium, 19 owners, in Adagio, over, I don't know how many exactly, but 300 and some, I think, and in Bellevita, quite a number as well. If it's going out to the homeowners association and they are, they're looking at their members to determine what the answer would be, that's one thing. If it's going out to individual homeowners, it's something else. Thank you.
My, my understanding would go to the homeowners association representative, whoever that turns out to be.
That, that clarifies the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
I'm a Walton County taxpayer in the Cowford and King Lake communities commissioners. I would request that the letter be amended to include the cost. For the sake of transparency, I think it would be best if, in the letter, we articulated the cost that would be paid by Walton County and also the cost that this commission hopes to obtain from the federal government and from the state government. I would also request that the letter be amended to signify and clarify and be honest about the fact that while tens of millions of dollars are being requested from the federal government, no money has been appropriated by the federal government. I would also request that the letter be clear that while $10 million has been requested from the state government, no money has been appropriated by the state government. As a matter of fact, the House of Representatives concluded $0 for this project and its budget that it passed off the floor. I would similarly request that you be clear in the letter that if the federal government does not allocate these funds, and if the state government does not allocate these funds, that adds to the tax burden that will be paid by the people of Walton County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Davis, I'm assuming if the federal government and the state government don't give us any money, it's a moot point, correct?
Well, I think it'd be brought back in front of the board for consideration as to what to do.
At some point, you're going to have to say, at some point, you'd have to authorize going forward with the project if those funds were not available or are available.
Yes.
So, let me just make sure I'm clear. We've had those two words in the first paragraph. I would take out the word "standard."
I will, I will amend my motion.
And the other thing was to add the negative check off as well.
Yes. Okay, so that's your amended motion?
Yeah, my, my motion would be amended to say, delete the word "standard." And then, and then where it says, "If you wish to participate in this project," to all capitalize, all those letters in bold them, okay? And then the next paragraph would start with all caps, emboldened letters as well, the, the phrase, "If you do not wish to participate in the project." So you'd have, "If you wish to participate in this project," bold letters, all caps, that paragraph. The next paragraph down would have all caps, bold letters. "If you do not wish to participate in this project, please write 'no,' and, you know, you could put 'no' in parentheses, across the first page of the easement document and return it to the county, or return it to whoever you said to return it to. Yeah, return it to...
Return it in the original...
The enclosed.
In the, in the original, oh, I'm sorry, in the enclosed, self-addressed, self-addressed and stamped envelope. And then I guess you would need to repeat, "We hope to have your easement, we hope to have your easement returned to us." I guess you would have to repeat that again in the second, in that second paragraph.
Okay. And let me just clarify, I'm not sure if I picked up thing, in the very first paragraph, we were changing the word "will" to "would"?
Yes, we're changing that to "would," and then we're also changing the...
It's considering.
The, the, yeah, it's undertaking, instead of undertaking, it's considering a hurricane-storm damage project. The proposed project would restore approximately and then go on from there. And I think that's, I think those are, those are the changes that I would add to my amend.
Just, just one short thing, Chairman, with those changes, I would assume that we're authorized to send the letter with those changes. Is that correct? Do I need to bring it back one more time?
No, no. No, no. Show it to the chairman, let the chairman...
Sure.
Make sure that it's spelled correctly.
What I meant, what I...
Yeah. Make sure it's spelled correctly and all that.
Considering "would," take that out, okay?
I'll amend the second.
Thank you, okay.
With the understanding that this will be the document, once these corrections are made, will be forwarded out.
That's correct, okay. Any other board comment?
And you want, one more thing, you want November the, what'd you say, 16th?
Yeah, November the 16th, 2015. And the, the cover letter will accompany the easement document, so whenever the easement documents are ready, I would hope that they would tell us and then we will know exactly the date that everything went out.
Yes, sir.
John Boushy, B.O.U.S.H.Y. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. I would like to echo Mr. Gates' request for transparency in government. It's clear that since 19, since 2012, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has described that the cost of this plan is $239 million. The congressional record in May of 2014 indicates that the cost of this plan would be $239 million. The difference between those two figures is $100,000. This is public, available information that some of us who have been very interested in this project all along have been able to find, and we are frankly surprised that the application that has been put forward and all of the information that was provided in public hearings for the last year has not included that number. So I think from a transparency standpoint, maybe it's measuring different things, maybe, you know, who knows why there's a difference? But if it were me sending out a letter to over 900 owners saying, "We're considering this project," I think I'd want to make sure that I've got the right numbers as we move forward on this. The other thing that I think is great with some of the changes tonight that I wanted to mention is that I know that there have been comments in the past about wanting to kind of conduct a poll to be able to really get a sense as to where the, the beachfront owners are on this, on this topic. And I think that with the changes that you're making, especially the addition of, "Send it back if you want it," and "Send it back if you don't want it," it removes all questions about whether people want it or not. And so I think that's a very good approach that, that the commission is taking. I think the final comment that I would make is that while you've softened the language to say "consideration," that we're considering the project. If I were receiving this letter from Walton County, I would perceive that this is your project. You are proposing this project, you have spent millions of dollars to get to this point, whether they're your dollars or whether they are federal dollars or state dollars, there have been millions of dollars spent to get to this point. As a property owner in Walton County, I will perceive this as the county commissioner's project. And I believe that there's, for whatever reason, there hasn't been as much perhaps direction on this project. I went back and looked for the last four years to find votes associated with this project. It's really difficult to find. So I would ask you, as you think about voting for whether to send out an easement letter or not, to realize that as soon as it gets sent out, this will be your project, and whether you like it or not, this will be a part of your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, seeing no further public comment, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Mr. Anderson, I apologize.
No, no, I just now raised my hand. Leonard Anderson, A.N.D.E.R.S.O.N. Again, for a point of clarification, please. If the homeowners associations are going to make the determination as to whether they're going to participate in this project or not, there should also be added how many, when it comes back, how many number of people belong to that particular homeowners association. In other words, in Seabloof, there's 19 of us, so 19 of us would, if we... So 19 of us would, if we approved, which we would, be 19 for. Adagio, however many. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. David Haak, H A A K. At the end of the six months, if the document has not been sent back, that is a, that is an indicator of a definite no vote. Is that correct?
Mark? Mark, can you?
I will tell you in the past, from my recollection, that the, they were sent multiple times when they didn't receive them back. I wasn't here then, I don't know why that was the case, but I've been told that in the past, they were sent a couple more times. That is up to you. You can decide to accept a no response in six months as a no vote or you can decide to try again with some folks.
I would expect at that time, the board will consider, what did we get back in the way of yes votes and from where? And what did we get back in the way of no votes and from where? And then we can also talk about what we didn't get back, if there's anything to be considered for that. But that, I think that's going to depend upon the results that we get back over that period of time.
I would suggest that we have three categories, no response, yes, and no.
It's going to have to be by area as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No response and yes and no. And then no response is no response.
But we'll be in a better position to decide on that after the period that these things are out to come back.
Okay, so you earlier said that you would send out one time. So now you're saying...
No, 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 we didn't change off that. Just like, you've got six months to respond. And during that period of time, you're either going to send it back as a yes, send it back as a no, or you don't respond. And then at that point in time, we'll tally up what we've got before we make a decision whether or not to go forward.
So if you have enough that do not respond, because let's say that they don't want it, you want to prolong this further?
Didn't say that. At that point in time, we'll decide what, if any, action needs to be taken.
Okay, thank you.
Call for the question.
Okay, wait. Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Wait, wait, wait. I have one comment.
Question's been called. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries one name.
Commissioners, I have, actually I have two more items. I need to add one. But the first item is a request to, for the board to adopt a resolution recognizing May as civility month in the state of Florida and authorizing the chair to sign the resolution. Just by way of background, this comes from the Florida VAR's Local Governance Section designating May as civil civility month. And if you'd like to adopt a resolution recognizing that, that would be very kind.
So would it apply to Walton County as well?
It would apply to the whole state and including Walton County.
What happens if you don't?
I guess we can be uncivil.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Briefly, just one add-on. I need to announce, I don't, and ask for your permission to schedule a executive, a special meeting for the purposes of a executive session slash shade meeting to discuss settlement negotiations in Sandeston versus Walton County in 14 C A 200, 14 C A 369.
Is that at our next meeting?
For when, at the meeting?
I'm sorry, for the next meeting, yes, for May 26.
At what time?
As soon as the regular session's over. It shouldn't take very long.
At the end of the regular session?
So after the thing, okay.
Yes.
Do we have to say?
So we'll just say at nine o'clock or soon thereafter if possible.
Motion to approve.
Is that Monday a holiday? Is that the Memorial Day holiday?
Yes.
You know, that is, okay, so the Tuesday is the, okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Need further board discussion? Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Commissioner Meadows.
I would like, I would like to request that the District Five Recreation Plant Fees, a couple of things we need to improve out at Hall and McCall Park. One is we need $12,000 to replace the scoreboard, the football scoreboard. And then we want $37,000 out of that fund. We're going to run electricity, excuse me, we're going to run electricity from the, it's on the east side now. We're going to run it over to the west side so that the T-ball courts could be lit and the soccer field could be lit. Actually, everything on the west side that we wanted to be lit could be lit. So I'd like the board's approval to go ahead and get those ordered and go ahead and get that work done and pay for it out of the District Five plant fees.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and my second thing I have here is that I would like the board to propose an ordinance, write an ordinance or revise the ordinance in the Land Development Code Plan and the Comp Plan that would say that any development, with the exception of single-family homes, that loads traffic onto a constrained roadway, which is a defined term in public transportation engineering, that the project must be reviewed as a major development.
My first question is, is what, how do we determine what's constrained?
It is all based on traffic numbers. It's a transportation computation that they, that the transportation engineers do to determine if that roadway, what capacity that roadway can carry, what capacity is that now, and is it, it's basically a level of service E, I think, which means that the road fails. But what happens is, in the current vernacular, they call it a constrained roadway, which allows you to dump more trips on it. You just, it's constrained and then they pay prop share funds. So it's really kind of semantics, but this would take, this would, this would prevent the issues such as a project that has mixed uses, but each mixed use does not trip the major development threshold, to be determined a major development. Because together, the whole development combined really is a major development. But, but the way it's written right now is that it's kind of, it's up to interpretation. So I'd like us to get firm, because one thing, the Chateau 38, the original plan was approved as a minor development. Well, only because it had components that didn't each individually meet the thresholds, but together, it was an impact to a constrained facility. So this would probably not change a whole lot, except for those mixed use projects that each one had a little component, but I added up together. So it would probably be mostly on 38, I would, I would assume. Some other constrained roadways might be seen at Golf Drive. And that would be, those were the main ones. So it would just be a definite, it would be, it would mean that the project would come to the Board of County Commissioners, the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And in the event, these types of projects, as we've seen, you know, we need to see them and we need to look at them from a traffic standpoint and from a drainage standpoint. And if they don't come to us, they may, it may not happen.
Right. So if it's a D R I or P U D, then it would not, it would already be established it would not come for us.
Right. If it's a D R I or a P U D, those would follow the D R I, P U D rules.
Well, since we have the transportation that we voted on earlier, would it be a good idea to maybe table this and let Public Works work with planning and Pebble Ridge to kind of, you know, kind of formulate more? So you said Senate 98, that was one of my questions, is how many roads in the county do we consider constrained?
Yeah, well, and this would be part of the... Part of the investigation, when they started looking at the ordinance, would be to come back with, with information for us and tell us that, you know, there's three constrained roadways, this would impact that. This would just be to kind of kick, kick off the investigation and look at changing the code to, to that, to that policy.
Right. And I'd really like to have a little bit more information. Like, I know it would put a tremendous work, more work on our planning department that's already, you know, really busy now anyway and shorthanded. So I personally would like a little bit more information from maybe the Transportation Committee before we actually, you know, pass this.
Yeah, and I agree. I think we need more information, definitely more information. But I think that at this stage of the game, that even though planning is, we're at that point where we have got to start looking at these developments on these constrained roadways that, and I think it will all dovetail into our traffic study and our prop share and our impact fee thing. But, but I think that it's very important that there's a lot of projects out there that would not meet the major development that, you know, your people are going to call you up and go, but how did that get passed? Well, it was kind of, sort of a hybrid of a, you know, and that's what we found with a couple of these coming through, that, that the planning department has the ability to require them to come as a major development if they deem the impacts to be great enough. Well, they, they, they didn't do that on a couple of them. And I think that that's, if, if they won't do that, then I think we need a policy that says definitively, that doesn't make them guess, that says definitively, if, if it reaches this level of impact, it must be reviewed as a major development. It takes a load off of them to decide. And then it, it gives us a true picture of what we're approving and what we're loading up out there on roads that are already jam-packed.
So you're saying that we basically can let the transportation look at constrained roads for, for instance, you know, to solve the problems like with connector roads or, and then we can pass this later after we get some information? Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying that, that, you know, let's start looking at this and, and let's start looking at this as a policy once we get the information on what is constrained and what we're looking at. It may be just one road, it may be, you know, a handful.
So we want to admin through Public Works to bring back information to...
Yeah.
The planning, Public Works and Pebble Ridge, because they are...
I might know how many hearings, I mean, will we have to go through a series of public hearings or?
Yeah.
You know, so we need to start, you know.
Let's get to the information first.
Yeah, we'd have to go to the, to the Planning Commission, then it'll come to the board. But, but yeah, it would, it would help in some of the things that we're looking at now. Okay, that's number one. And the second one would be that we look at, the second one would be that we look at the village mixed use, both the land use, the Land Development Code and the Conference of Plan. Look at village mixed use with the idea of assigning percentages of mixed uses. Make it clear as to what exactly that we're, we're looking for. And I don't know what that is, but I'm just saying, let's ask planning to come back with a proposed ordinance that would, that would better define what can and cannot be in a village mixed use and what the mixtures would have to be if they, if there is a requirement and all the other details that would fall into that in both Land Development Code and the Comp Plan. So that we would, there would be no doubt about anybody that has that land use as to what they could do and what we would require.
That's a great idea.
Yes, sir.
Certainly support that.
Get them to work on that and come back with some information on that.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. And that's, that's all I have right now.
Commissioner Commander.
No, sir.
Commissioner Jones.
Just a couple of things. Thanks to Commissioner Meadows for adding those things at Hall and McCall. The parents are going to be, you know, really glad. They've been working on trying to get this done for a long time. So we, and I will spread the word as a grandma out there, so.
Hopefully, we'll get it done. P D Q.
And then, you know, I just want to kind of explain my vote and no. It truly is important to me to know who wants to do this renourishment or not. But then on the other hand, paying $50,000 that, quite honestly, if everybody in this room said you wanted it, I would not vote for it because number one, we don't have the money. And I'm concerned about the money. And I'm very concerned about sand quality. We have a sand ordinance and I don't want to be, I don't want to be one that violates it. So that's why I voted no. I just can't, I can't support putting more money in, in even, you know, $50,000 is not much compared to how much we've spent, but that's why I voted no. Thank you.
Thank you. Birthday boy.
Well, Bill, I want everybody to know for the record that I'll never catch up to yours. But anyway, thank y'all for your wishes.
Respect your elders. Thank you. One thing I've got is that we heard earlier that we've got the information starting to come back in, almost complete on the stormwater issues. And I know that there is a, a committee from the Restore Act that's going to be looking at projects. I'd like to see our staff work to get together the necessary information to also get considered for Restore Act funding, some of these projects. I know there's, there's money in pot one that, that could be available for this, but we've got to dot some i's and cross some t's and get a plan together. And I'd like to give direction to admin to get that so that the July 31st deadline for the committee review, we've got something in front of them that can help alleviate some of the immediate needs on stormwater and especially as we get prioritization that comes in from Public Works. So I'd like to make it a directive to County Administrator to please pursue that and make sure we've got everything necessary to get in front of the July 31st committee.
We'll be glad to do that. Along those lines, one of, there's two critical components to capturing the 5.7 million transocean dollars that is part of our pot one. And let's be clear that that's only the transocean portion. There's no BP money been awarded yet. And that's, we're anticipating that being considerably more than this 5.7. But to get to that money, we have to have two things. One is we need to, have to have a multi-year plan, which we have started working on, but it's a long process. To facilitate moving that process along, we could, we've recommended and we've vetted this with legal and through our purchasing, that Gulf County has gone through a competitive process to vet consultants and awarded a contract that is really on a per need basis and not a lump sum number that we could piggyback on and begin that process that would kind of jumpstart us and kick us forward in that process. So if it would be your desire for us to do that, it's a simple motion to piggyback our consulting agreement on Gulf Counties and begin the, take what we've already done, plug it into that and move forward with our multi-year plan, that would certainly help that process.
Can we do that now because he brought it up? Or do we have to wait till the next meeting?
Oh, I think you can.
You know, there's no requirement for an agenda, so, you know, you certainly could do it now if you want to.
Okay, then I will make that motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion on that?
Yeah, the only other caveat I would have to that is that, you know, there was talk about using our staff as much as possible on it. The one thing about, you know, our staff is, is that, you know, we've just lost a planner.
Yes, exactly.
We're, we're really just, so, so that it doesn't affect the natural flow of things in the county.
That's the last thing I wanted. And that's part of the reason we're thinking this is going to be a good move. We certainly have a lot of talent and we want to use them. And this particular agreement will let us, if we have capacity to do this component, we don't have to get the consultant to do it. So it's geared so that it can be on a task order base. But, and thank you for that because you're right, they're working hard and they're stretched. But, but we'll certainly make sure that, and these funds are refundable. So whatever we expend on this, on this process, we can recapture.
Any further board comment? Any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Suzanne Harris. So see, I'd like to thank you very much. We're not always on the same side, but I'd like to thank you very much for what you did tonight. I think you deserve a round of applause from everybody out here who was not for the beach nourishment. Sorry, Bill, it's hard to talk to you because you voted for it. But I also, I also want to say that I...
Remember, Ms. Harris, this is civility month.
Bill, also, I'd like to say that, I'd like for this, Bill, for you to ask Mark, for this to be my public record request, to have a copy of all the names that the easements are being mailed out to. I think the ads about Jim Bagby, Jim and I have been friends forever. I think some of those probably cross the line. And I really hope that whoever spent their money to run those ads spends just as much money to let the people know that are on this list of names the true facts of how much this project is going to cost and that we really don't have the money secured for it yet.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. This is to go forward with the piggybacking.
Okay.
The motion that you made.
The motion that I made, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the other component of that is there's a process to move these through the local Restore Committee. And we'll make sure, whatever you need to do on that end, we'll get before you in short order. But we'll begin doing staff work to get them there.
Thank you.
And Billy Williams is here. Did I say all that right, Mr. Williams? Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Appreciate your help on that. Chester Carter.
Chester Carter, C-A-R-T-E-R. I'm here today to campaign for Bruce Creek Environmental or Bruce Creek Ecosystem as well as all intricate, unique ecosystems that we have in this county. My point is, if you look to the east, there have been ecosystems, environmental systems, that have been severely damaged by landfills. One example of that is Bear Creek, Deer Point Lake in Bay County. The Majet Tower landfill existed for years. The leaching and the percolation of that system has caused Bay County to pay extreme high prices for water treatment. To get the water to a potable state to sell it, they have to add so much chemistry to achieve that. That, I don't think, is the way we would like to go over here because if we apply pride, preservation, and conservation to our business, we'll leave this land as we found it. So the other example is Steel Field, which leaches into the East River into Lower Chalk Haci. You can talk to people that use that ecosystem, and there are pretty bad effects of that chemistry, carcinogenic, cancer-causing products leaching into that water. I don't know if you would want to consume the fish, and I doubt there are any shellfish left in that area. They're the most sensitive and usually the first to go. The third example you may be more familiar with is Coyote Landfill on Alacoa Creek. If you talk to people that have used that system, that particular landfill has caused quite a bit of damage to lower Alacoa and continues to leach into Chalk Haci Bay. So if you go to Patrick Filter and ask the expert mapmaker, Jerry Pottridge, to give you a map of any area, an aerial he can delineate, superimpose wetlands, topography, all the features of the land that would allow percolation and leaching of these materials from landfills. Bruce Creek Ecosystem, as some of you know, sustained the native Uchi Indians for, we don't know how long. It sustained, that system sustained in Uchi Valley the first European settlers from 1820 till well into around 1900. So what I'm asking for is, as we travel forward, and you'll be hearing more from me on this subject, I would like to ask you to investigate the situation and the technology available to us as citizens, the new technology with landfills, to wherever we want to locate another landfill, we make sure that we avail ourselves to the latest technology. And that is not the old liner system. Liners like the tile on the space shuttle, they break and leak. There's 18 inches of rain comes along, they overflow, they pollute, they contaminate systems. So there's new technology. So I think in the interest of pride, preservation, conservation, we need to be very careful as we entertain locations for new landfills in this county because that's a necessary evil. But it's something that I think we can deal with in a fashion that will not leave this county or these ecosystems damaged. And again, thank you for the opportunity to participate in local government.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Jones, will you just make sure our landfill director is aware of those comments?
Certainly will.
Thank you. Ken Hinrichs.
Ken Hinrichs, last name H-I-N-R-I-C-H-S. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Mr. Administrator. I am the Chief Executive Officer of the United Way of Okaloosa and Walton Counties. There's a perception, I think, around the country that the United Way is one giant national organization. In truth, there are about 1,800 United Ways, all separately incorporated. All the money that is raised by those local United Ways stays in the area and goes to fund local nonprofits. Our United Way is Okaloosa and Walton County. We fund about 40 organizations. And unlike most charities, we don't raise money through events. Our United Way raises the money, which ultimately goes back to support Health and Human Care Services in Okaloosa and Walton County from employees. And so we go to local businesses, and we ask them to have a chance to speak to their employees and give the employees a chance to say yes or no about United Way. And that's what I'm here today to do, is to ask you to give permission for us to run a United Way campaign before each and every Walton County employee. We already run campaigns with the members of the school district and the teachers and with organizations like Florida Transformer and Chelco and organizations, many of the banks. And I'm here to ask you today to support that request. What we'll do in the fall is go in front of each and every employee, give them a brochure very similar to the one that you have in your hands. That's actually last year's brochure. And through payroll deduction that the county offers, we will then collect whatever donations they make in pledges spaced out during the course of the year. So that's my request. I'll be glad to answer any questions if I may.
Board, have any questions? Okay, you'll be here in the fall?
I will be here in the fall. We have a Walton County person, Erin Igram, who also works Walton County for us, both in the funds distribution side. And the money, again, that's raised in Walton County stays in Walton County.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we'll be glad to meet with folks and look at what opportunities may be there to work together. I certainly know during our open enrollment period, we have the ability for them to reach out to employees. And we'll be glad to do that. He'll call and get a... Stand and get a card. We'll get in touch with him.
Okay, very good. Anyway, thank you. This is really a choice of the employee, and that's what makes United Way the strong organization that it is funding local health and human care services. So thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, is a motion necessary for that?
No, he's got the direction to work with you on that. That doesn't require a motion.
Fantastic. I look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Dr. Leatherman, I'd like to invite you back up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stephen Leatherman. I guess you have my name correctly. I'm a professor at Florida International University. A lot of people call me Dr. Beach. You may know that I do a rating of America's best beaches. And in fact, a number of years ago, one of the first beaches I put on my list was Grayton Beach State Park. And it was... Came the number one beach. And some people say that really increased a lot of awareness of how great your beaches are here in the Florida Panhandle about 20 years ago. In fact, three beaches in the Florida Panhandle have made that list. And so if you look at the criteria, I use 50 criteria, but certainly clean water and clean sand are first. But also, people really like very fine white sand. And I find this in all my work, that that's something that's very highly treasured by people. People ask me about that, and of course, that's one of the main criteria. And of course, you're blessed to have all those. You have beautiful beaches, clean water, clean sand, and also this very unique sand, only found in a few places in the world. And in fact, the Panhandle is the longest stretch of such sand I know of in the world. I've traveled around the world, many places, not everywhere, but many countries. So it is unique. And as you know, it's quartz crystal, about 99% or plus fine pure material. And also, this emerald green water you have, I guess you're probably aware that that's partially because you have the white sand. It's also that you have a gentle sloping beach, so you have shallow water. But it's reflection off that white sand, it actually makes the water so beautiful, green color, emerald green color. So that's also part and parcel of the sand itself. And of course, I think you realize you need to maintain this sand quality. And I am concerned that we're talking about millions of cubic yards of sand being added to your beach. And there seems to be a lot of... And it looks to be, you know, it's not... As you know, you have Mussel Color 8. That is really kind of the highest on the scale. And I looked at some of the documents in the Corps and the offshore borrow site that they're going to or looking to go to has most of the sand 7, 6, 5, and 4. So that does concern me. It is inferior quality. And I just worry about how that's going to affect your sand quality in the future. I'd like to mention, I'm also involved presently in another sand debate, if you wish. A small town in Surfside. It's north of Miami Beach. I bring this up just to give you a little perspective. This town only has .9 miles of beach. It is a town. And what's happened here recently, last year, the Surf Club, which had been there for something like 90 years, was torn down, nine acres, and to build a Four Seasons Hotel, which will double the tax base of this small town. It's pretty incredible. It's going to be really a luxury condominium hotel. And so it was... The town was very eager to get this and get the tax money. But the question became, what are we going to do with... They had to excavate to build a building 12, 14 stories high. They had to excavate down, and they had 20,000 cubic yards of material to dispose of. And now the state of Florida demanded that since it was sand quality, that it not be taken out of the system. So they thought, well, let's just put it on the beach. And so that was done. Now, the problem is that that sand had a number of problems. One problem was, it's not the same color. Now, it was placed along the beach, 0.9 miles of beach. The beach is about 50 feet wide averages. And it turned out to be 18 inches thick to get rid of all that fill. And there have been, for last year, meeting after meeting in the town, debating this whole thing, and people don't like it. They say, "It took our Surfside sand, our Surfside white sand, and turned it into brown sand." Some people use other words, but brown sand. It's a topic of brown sand. So the debate has been, okay, what do we do? So there have been two screenings. First of all, they did find some construction material in it, very rejectable. And they've done two screenings of that, but that hasn't made the residents happy. They say, "Well, they haven't got enough." And also, we don't like the brown sand. So finally, I was brought in by the town to help them with their sand committee, be a technical expert. And at the end of the day, it was decided, well, let's just take the sand off the beach. So it's been there a year, and I have to tell you, it didn't bleach very much. So some sand bleaches some, some sand doesn't bleach much at all. So it's not all the same in that regard. And so now, the Four Seasons has decided that we will pay to remove it themselves, even though they had a permit. They legally did this. The town, you know, has said, "Okay." But the Surf Club has decided to spend a million-plus dollars to remove the sand. Unfortunately, it's now starting to be turtle season, so they have to wait. It started, as you know, this month, and they have to wait until number one, where they can really do any work. They tried to actually get an exception, but US Fish Files said, "Absolutely not." So it's still sort of sticking people's crawl, this whole thing and the problem. But I bring that to your attention because that was a small amount of sand, and yet it caused a huge amount of problems in terms of the quality of the sand. I'll finish up quickly. So it's important, I think, and I've read a number of documents. And I have to say, I'm a little confused myself with all the numbers. I haven't maybe put the time in. I'd like to in this project. But I think the first thing is you need to get all your facts straight. And I think that's something that we need to hear. We hear different numbers, and I think people understand that. And also, I think that I've read these reports, but I'd like to see the sand itself. When I was doing Surfside, we had the sand to look at. And I think you'd need to see the sand yourself, and I'd like to look at it.
Dr. Leatherman, I met with him earlier today. We had a very lengthy discussion. And I've already directed Mr. Bagby to get from Taylor Engineering samples from the borrow site that's intended for use, to get them to you, Dr. Leatherman, so that you'll have the opportunity yourself to explore whether or not they meet or don't meet certain criteria. So I appreciate your willingness to do that and to add to the information that's going to be available to the public for the consideration in the future. So thank you very much for coming up here tonight.
I just have one question from him. Dr. Leatherman, how far down does the sand... Does the further you go down, does the sand change colors? Or is... How far down does the top layer of white sand, or what is the geology of all of that?
Okay, part of it's geology, and that's what we're talking about in terms of the different mineralogy. But part of it is something called anaerobic zone. Anaerobic means without oxygen. And when you don't have oxygen, if you have organic material, it'll stain the sand. Now, if you take that sand out, and you probably know this, you ever go to Marshes? I don't know if you ever walk around Marshes, and you know that is very dark. Fill that stuff up for a while, the organics will meet the oxygen, and basically, the organics will decay and disappear. And that's how that sand becomes much whiter because the organics are hard to stain it. In other cases, it's actually different mineralogy. For instance, they're looking now, we're running out of sand off of Miami-Dade County. And they're looking for St. Lucie and sand off of Martin County. And they've got borrow sites there. The Corps has got them. Bought them back. I said, "I have to see them." I looked at them. Wow, is that stuff really dark. One of the people said, "It looked like volcanic sand, it's so dark." Well, it wasn't quite that black, but it's pretty dark, so I don't know what we're going to do. Yes, so it has to do with where you go and find it. It's a different mineralogy for different formations. And I hope you could go back and get some of the sand that we were talking about, that Mr. Mfield was talking about, that was put on Sandestin. And that looked pretty good, but what I'm concerned about what you're getting. And again, I think as seen as believing, I'd like to see samples.
And we're going to get that to you, sir.
So the sand that's out there now, though...
Yes.
How far down would you have to go before you hit a different colored sand?
Wow. Well, it's a pretty complicated geologic history out there.
It can vary all over.
It can vary quite a bit, and it's a complicated geology out there. And that's the reason I do borings and try to locate some of the best. Now, the samples we got from Martin County, one was pretty good. And I wish they could get more of that, but they found one, but the others, I'm telling you, they were Mussel 5 and 4, which to me is way down the list.
Thank you, Dr. Leatherman. Mr. Hildreth. Mr. Hildreth had his hand up?
I'm Debbie Haak. Can y'all hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, spell your last name.
I'm from Textrac County, Arkansas, but...
Spell your last name.
Debbie Haak, H-A-A-K.
Thank you.
We have a new home, relatively new, four years old, Blue Mountain Road. There's a lot of discussion that we get by mail. I've heard, been here one other meeting, and then I've heard this today. And there's, you know, y'all can debate this renourishment of the beach for the rest of eternity. I want to tell you personally what I think. I worked with tourism in Arkansas for about 16 years. And the word in every commission meeting when we looked at advertising was, "We don't want to see the Panhandle of Florida pop up" because there are many people, and y'all know it, from Alabama, Mississippi, Louisiana, Arkansas, Georgia, that they haven't had a vacation until they've been to the Panhandle. And I'm amazed when I get down here, I see lots of friends and neighbors. And I say that because when we started looking, this wasn't my idea, what David and I did, it was his. And we looked from Apalachicola to Fort Morgan for a place to build a house for vacation to enjoy. And David came in one day, and he said, "Well, I found it. It's Blue Mountain Road." And I thought, "This is crazy. It can't be that great." And we hadn't been coming to Florida in a long time. So we came in, we looked at it, and we decided to do this. We spent two years building, and I'm going to say this because y'all ought to know our name if anybody's an employee of Walton County. We have done everything but stand on our head to build a house on 30A in Walton County. We have followed every rule. We have had lawyers, engineers, on-site engineers, requests to do many things. And we always said, "Do what the law is. Do what we're asked to do. Do what they feel is the most important thing, to preserve this beautiful piece of the world that we have right here." You know, I've heard anywhere from 7 to 10 million people that we want to bring into Walton County. Is that an accurate number? Because I'm telling you, we, right now, on Blue Lake Road, two cars can't meet. Because I'm telling you, we, right now, on Blue Lake Road, two cars can't meet without scratching our cars. Now, where are those, how many, how many do you think would come in? Give me a number.
You've got the floor, you please go.
Oh, I'm asking now.
You've got the floor, so you just keep going.
Okay. I want to know, how many people you're trying to get? I've looked at what you've got, your reserve right now is $45 million. The Corps doesn't have the money, or hasn't appropriated, y'all don't have the money, the state doesn't have the money, nor has it been appropriated. I'm having a hard time while all these meetings and all these lawyers, unless you know something that we don't know, that's going to make Walton County a better place to live or vacation, a safer place? I thought it was interesting, Mr. Bagby, spring break was down. You shouldn't have to think about why spring break was down, guys. Spring break was down because of the national publicity of the Panhandle right here. And if you don't know it, then you're blind, you're not reading what people are saying. I cannot tell you how many people said, "I'm not going, I'm not going." We have friends who own condos, and a condo, and I've, listen, we've said in condos many times, a condo is a different issue because you have many more people compact than when you're on Blue Mountain, or Dune Allen, or where there's personal private homes. And we have people that use our public walkovers and our neighborhood walk, and I love it, I've met the best people in the world here. But what you're trying to do needs to be measured by quality of life. And I talked to Mr. Bagby, in the state of Arkansas, A&amp;P money, which is your hotel tax, there's a quality of life part of the ordinance. If you're not improving the quality of life for the people that you are collecting taxes from, then you need to rethink it. I heard someone say that tourism is run by Disney, and that the legislature in Tallahassee makes decisions by what Disney wants. Well, let me tell you this, if that's true, then we've got the wrong legislators up there, maybe from many places. And if that is also true, David and I are paying way too much property tax, because we could have the same house in Orlando for a whole lot less money than we're paying to be on the white sands of Blue Mountain with security, where we can put our grandchildren on their bikes, and they can ride and ride and ride.
Thank you, Ms. Haak.
Okay, now I want to know how many people?
Your time is up, please.
Okay, can you get me that information?
We will get that information. On an estimate of what it is, Mr. Bagby will get you an estimate.
Thank you, free time.
Mr. Hildreth's going to be the last one before we take a break. So, Mr. Hildreth, come on up. And after you speak, we're going to take a break.
You want to go ahead and make the...
No, sir, I want you to get your five minutes, and we'll go.
All right. I'm heart of hearing, was the $240 million cost, was it included in the cover letter, Mr. Chairman?
Not as I understand the motion, Mr. Hildreth. No, sir, not as I understood the motion.
Was any of the cost included in the cover letter?
Not as I understood the motion, no, sir.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies that. In answer to what somebody said, one vote can only reflect one title, one property. You can't have a condominium with 1,000 people and count that as 1,000 yes or no votes. That condominium has one title, it'll get, has one vote. And if it's done anyway, other than that, Mr. Chairman, there will be a legal challenge to it. Okay, let me move on. The facts are pretty clear now, that the county doesn't have the 120 million fully-funded amount of money, the county doesn't have 120 million, the state hadn't put up money, the Fed hadn't put up money, the Corps of Engineers are not going to put up any money. You don't have the money, you don't have any, even close to it. Are you going to raise taxes to get it? Is that the consequence? Are we going to have enormous raises of taxes in this county to raise all these millions, millions of dollars? Is that your legacy? That's the question you have to answer. Now, I will give you this, from a beachfront property owner that pays bid tax. I talked to him at 1:30. There's a move underway, folks. The bid tax people, beachfront property owners, do not want this project, and they are sick and tired of their bid tax money going to some construction project. This beachfront property owner from Northern Virginia said I could even use his name, it's Norm Crutchfield. And on a week, he makes a lot of money with the public beach in front of him and the hordes out there, his runners won't come, and he won't make a dent. He is sick and tired of his bid tax money going to some construction project. He was under the impression, when he built down here, that the bid tax money was for promotion, not some ill-fated construction project that won't last through a tropical storm. Now, I hope this commission gets it, you don't have the money, this is an ill-advised project, it needs to stop. And lastly, I'm going to say this, Mr. Chairman, for all of you, I'm 80 years old, I agree with Matt Yates back here, and Debbie, Debbie that just spoke to you, my wife, and all the rest of these people. In my 80 years, I've been in one, two hits, attorney and investment. I've made a lot of bad deals in my life. I walked away from them, I've cut my losses. Mercifully, I think I've made more good deals than bad deals, but I've made bad deals. This is a bad deal, just like some other bad deals we're hearing about on the national front. It's a bad deal. Cut your losses, we won't blame you one bit for the money spent, just stop it. It's a bad deal. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, we can bring it all to a stop, and we'll all applaud you, and thank God it's over. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hildreth. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Mr. Anderson. Mark.
As with most things, there are two sides to every story. Let me tell you what happened in 2005, for those that were not here. Dennis came along. I live in a condominium that I moved into permanently in 2003, I've owned since 1991, and to Emmett's great admittance of age, I'm 84. So what happened was Dennis came along, wiped out our walkover, wiped out our dune, our cliff, we live on the highest point on the whole Gulf Coast, by the way, and left an area underneath the front units, of which there were seven, completely where you could look under and see underneath them. Talk about money. I have been told that the money for this project, at least at the federal level, was already allocated. Let me go back just a second to where I was. What we did was totally repair that area, rebuild the dune, put in a seawall, cover it, so that you would never, ever know it was there. And the sand that we used was not from the beach, but I defy, I defy anyone to tell me that our sand on that dune looks any different than the rest of the sand below it, out to the water. Now, that only cost every one of us 19, a little over $30,000 each. And that doesn't include what it cost Adagio and Bellevita. I'm saying this, we don't want to see that happen again. And in 2006, Brad Pickle decided to hold workshops, telling us exactly what we could do to re-nourish the beach. I attended most of those workshops. And I believe personally that that is the way to go, and it's not a bad deal, not at all. Because what you're going to do is save all of Blue Mountain Beach, that's what will end up happening. And otherwise, I'll paraphrase what Brad Pickle said at an open meeting not too long ago, at which most of these people attended. When I asked him, "Brad, what will happen if we do not restore the beach? Will there be any damage, or will we have any beach?" And he said, and I'm paraphrasing, he said, "There will be no beach." And if you want to look at something really bad, come look at Blue Mountain Beach where I live, where I have maybe 20 yards, or maybe 30 yards at high tide. That's all the beach we have. And if you want to check the sand, check it where you've already re-nourished. And if you want to put sand down and look and see what it's going to do, I'll be glad to give you a strip of my sand to use as a test area. And I think my board will approve it. I'm one vote on that board, but I'm sure they'd approve it. In other words, we need the beach re-nourished, we need to redo the beach. And if, if what we have been told for over five years at our workshops is true, there is no reason not to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other public comments? Yes, sir. Come on up.
My name is Donnie Bush, B-U-S-H. My reason for being here today is, is over the West Bay Base Sector Plan.
Okay, sir, that matter's coming up during the land use issue, and we'll be hearing it at that time.
Is that when you'll take public comments?
Yes, we'll take public comments at that time, yes, sir. Thank you. All right, moving on to land use. Mr. Dice.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Boushee had raised his hand, too. Do you want to go first?
I probably want to.
Thank you, I was trying to wait for everybody else to go, so I wouldn't repeat any comments. Kent Safrit with the Law Firm of Hopping Green and Sams in Tallahassee, again, on behalf of numerous beachfront landowners representing over 5,000 linear feet of beach in opposition to the project. I think the word of the night is transparency. I think several speakers had used that word, and I think it's the ideal word to use to sum up this beach restoration project. If there's anything about this project, it's not transparent, it hasn't been for years. The TDC's management of this hasn't been transparent. Since 2012, actually earlier than that, the TDC told the Army Corps of Engineers in their report, "It appears the majority of landowners within the project area are supportive of this project." Where does that information come from? Where's the factual basis for that? There's no outreach to the public, there's no outreach to the landowners, there's no survey, no polls, no nothing. TDC made it up to lead the Corps to believe there was public support for it. When these, when these meetings began, the Corps came here and said they were shocked at the, at the opposition to the project, because they'd been led to believe people supported it. In light of that, last meeting, I asked for Mr. Chapman's emails, because the Board seemed concerned a little bit, because they couldn't gauge the public support for or against it from beachfront landowners. Mr. Chapman said, a lot, he had received a lot of emails and support. I got those, I analyzed every one of them, 38 emails you had. Three were from beachfront landowners, 35 from non-beachfront landowners. I cross-referenced that with the list from the Corps that they're going to send the easements out to. Three documented instances of public support from beachfront landowners. That's it. But yet, the TDC tells the Corps there's public support for it. 239 million, how many of you commissioners have heard that number before tonight? Or from some of my people? Did anybody hear it from the TDC? It's nowhere on any of the websites that you direct people to go to in your cover letter for truth and facts about this project. Why not? Certification from the Corps of Engineers in 2012 certifying $239 million is the cost of this project, in 2014, it's more now. Where's the transparency in that number? You rejected Mr. Gates' suggestion to put it in the cover letter. There's no transparency here, at all. There's other instances regarding the TDC's lack of transparency throughout this project, identifying the wrong borrow areas, failing to comply with public records. I had to file a lawsuit on behalf of clients to get public records relating to this project. I got them within four hours of filing the lawsuit.
Excuse me. I don't want to interrupt you, we don't want to talk about that.
I'm not going into it, I'm just saying I had to file a lawsuit. Very good. And so, got public records after having to file a lawsuit. The conclusion is, the public believes there's a systematic, systematic problem with the TDC, either withholding information or disseminating misleading information to advocate for this project. The TDC believes their goal is, make this project happen, come hell or high water, no matter what. And that's what they're on the train tracks to do, because this Board hasn't given them any guidance otherwise. Like Mr. Boushee said, there's, there's lack of any votes acknowledging the breadth of this project, when you go back four years, from this Board. But, the other word of the night, I will say, is legacy. Until now, this project is on the shoulders of the TDC. All of the misrepresentations, the lack of information, the lack of transparency, is on the shoulders of the TDC. And not just this TDC and Mr. Bagby's directors, but the TDC before him and the prior consultants. He inherited this project, but this TDC is continuing with this misguided project. So, at this point in time, I believe that the Board voting tonight to send this easement out, as Mr. Boushee said, this becomes the Board's project. No longer can this Board say, "Oh, I didn't know about that, oh, the TDC didn't tell me that, I wasn't aware of that fact." Because we, as citizens, have been here trying to educate you all about the misinformation that has been out there about this project for a long time. So at this point, this project becomes yours. The citizens didn't elect the TDC, they can't elect the TDC, they wish they could. They elected this Board as leaders of this county, and they expect and hope that this Board will be leaders. Make the tough decisions that leaders have to make, not kick the can, not toss the hot potato down to a later date, they want the Board to make tough decisions. Like Emmett said, it's time for this project to stop. You make a bad deal, make it stop. Don't dig in and double down and dig deeper. So I leave that with the Board. I would, I would like to see somebody make a motion to reconsider the earlier approval of the letter, and then make a motion to kill the project. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Nell Moye, M-O-Y-E. I own property, oh, let me just back up a minute, since we're all giving our ages, except for the birthday boy. I'm 75 years old, and damn glad to be that. Okay. Okay. But we're talking about the money that costs, when, cost to re-nourish these beaches, beaches. And on October the 4th, 1995, we experienced Hurricane Opal. And I just wonder, those of you who are old enough to remember it, I would wonder how much money was spent trying to replace all that Hurricane Opal destroyed. Until you have experienced it, you have no earthly idea. The lovely lady, new neighbor, Ms. Haak, spoke a few minutes ago, she's right on the beach, she has no idea what's going to happen if we hit head-on with a major hurricane. Now, having seen her house, I assume they have the money that they can take care of this, but most of us don't. I, for one, live on a widow's pension. This, I just wonder if you have any idea, if you have, does anybody up there, Mr. Jones, who's speaking to Mr. Davis, if you're listening to me just a minute?
Ma'am, address the chair.
Address the chair. Okay, Mr. Enfield, the man to your left, if he would listen to me. Anyway, the point, I'm wondering...
I'm certainly listening, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, I'm so much older than you, I might spank you if you don't. So, and you might enjoy it.
Okay.
But, anyway. The point I'm trying to ask, one, one question is, does anybody have any idea what it costs? The point I'm trying to ask, one question is, does anybody have any idea what it costs the county to clean up after Hurricane Opal? And number two, can you imagine what it might cost if we have another Hurricane Opal? Thank you very much, and thank you to the gentleman to your left for listening.
Okay. Are we ready for land use?
Please.
Okay.
I call for whatever.
Mr. Bausch, make the brief.
John Bausch again. I've purchased eight properties here in Walton County. Five of them are beachfront. When I choose a beachfront property, I choose it for various reasons. Number one, I'm willing to pay more because it's a mean-high-waterline property. Plain and simple. I'm willing to pay more because it's a mean-high-waterline property. I view that that's more valuable. Number two, first property I purchased was in August of 1995. It was beachfront. It was delayed because Hurricane Erin came in. In October, Hurricane Opal came in, and we had the opportunity to repair the house that we just purchased, fortunately, partially with insurance proceeds. But unfortunately, insurance doesn't pay for sand. So we paid $80,000 to replace the sand that we had to replace in order to structurally make sure that our house was fine because it had washed underneath the house. We're very aware, and I think most beachfront owners are very aware, of the risk that they face when they purchase beachfront. There's a premium we pay because we're purchasing beachfront, and there's a cost that goes along with that. Each year, it is taxes that we pay. Each year, it's the maintenance that we have to have. And I think that each of the beachfront owners has an opportunity to make a determination as to whether they support this project, and they should do that. At the same time, they need the right information, and it's just really clear that unfortunately, unless you dig deep, like some of us have been able to dig, you don't necessarily find all the facts. And, you know, whether the commission is interested in revisiting or not, I'll leave that to you. I suspect you're not. But I think at the end of the day, it will be very clear how many beachfront owners are interested in this project and how many beachfront owners are not, and then you'll have your answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we move on, please?
Mr. Dice, floor's yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We have several legislative items. The first one being the Winston Townhomes Large Scale Amendment. I'll ask Mr. Brian Underwood to brief the commission on this item.
Thank you, Brian Underwood, Planning and Development Services. This is the Winston Townhome Large Scale Amendment, number 15-003 for parcel 36-3S-18-16,100-000-0541. The site is the location of a proposed four-unit multifamily townhome project at the parcel. The current land use designation is neighborhood commercial on the inlet beach, traditional neighborhood plan, future land use map, neighborhood infill on the Walton County Comprehensive Plan land use map. The proposal is to amend the site to residential eight units per acre on the future land use map of the inlet beach traditional neighborhood plan. The site is located on the north side of County Road 30A at the intersection of Winston Lane and CR 30A. We have received one letter of comment from the public from Mr. Robert Quarles on April And the requested action is a motion to recommend approval or denial of the request for adoption of an ordinance amending the Walton County Comprehensive Plan, Appendix B, which is the Inlet Beach Traditional Neighborhood Plan.
Commissioners, before we take any public comments, I'll need a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioners, any comments from y'all first? Any public comment?
You want to hear from me?
Our applicant, let the applicant come up first, yes.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Dean Burgess. I represent the owner in this request. Mr. Underwood did a good job of describing what the request is. I just wanted to expand on that. Currently, the property is designated neighborhood commercial. It lies, if you look at the inlet beach neighborhood map, in a residential area. We're requesting to make it consistent with that map as a residential property. Further, Section 3.4.2 of the Inlet Beach Neighborhood Plan specifies that neighborhood commercial uses, which is what it currently is, shall be those properties abutting US 98, and those properties currently zone village mixed use at the eastern intersection of 30A and 98. Neither of those conditions does the property meet, so it really is not consistent with neighborhood commercial. And we view that this would be a lowering of the intensity of the property from a commercial use to a residential use. So with that, we ask the board's consideration for approval.
Thank you. Come on up.
This isn't a force-accused issue, so we don't need export items.
No, I think it's legislative.
So we don't need export items.
Oh, we don't?
Just legislative.
It's legislative, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Bob Murfin, M-U-R-F-I-N, from Inlet Beach. Have no objection to this clarification of the neighborhood plan because it does, in fact, show one thing in one place and say somewhere else. However, I need to draw your attention to the last phrase in the language of the large-scale amendment that's included in the ordinance where it says, and I quote, "Adding reference to the parcel," and gives the parcel number to Section 4.5.4 of the plan. Section 5.4.5.4 is, in fact, explicitly the section that exempts properties from the conditions of the preceding paragraph, 4.5.3, which says specifically, "All residential property south of US 98 and County Road A," and provides a maximum density of four units. This property, as we heard during the introduction, is north of 30A and does not belong in this paragraph. It's governed by 4.5.2 for properties north of 98 and 30A, and therefore, it just needs to be struck. Questions for me?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean, you want to respond?
I agree with the statement that he made, and basically what he's saying is, 4.5.4 is the listing of all the properties that are eight units per acre. I don't see that this property is necessary to be added to that list because it is, in fact, north of the roads called out by that section. And under Section 4.5.2, the maximum residential density is per the Comprehensive Plan, which is for infill, eight units per acre.
So you don't have any problems with striking the phrase after the comma and by adding a reference? Just strike that phrase?
Correct.
Okay. Any further public comment?
Okay.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any further comments from the board?
Motion to approve.
Sorry, motion to approve. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
With the striking.
With the striking, okay.
Chairman, the last, the next item on the agenda is the Bay Walton Sector Plan. I'll ask Tim Whaler to come up. He is the project manager for this application. I will mention, this is Tim's last meeting with us here. He's going back to the Renaissance Group. He's been an excellent addition to our staff. Hate to see him go, but we do wish him the best in his endeavors with his firm. So, again, Tim, if he'd come up and give a brief overview, and I just want to publicly thank Tim for his efforts.
Anybody say he could actually leave?
Try it, that'd work.
You're going to have to get past the bailiff.
Yeah.
Thanks, Wayne. Tim Whaler, Planning Department. This is a sector plan application. It was submitted by St. Joe Company. They're requesting adoption of an ordinance approving the Bay Walton Sector Long-Term Master Plan in accordance with Florida statutes. The project consists of 13,284 acres in Walton County. Project is located generally west of the Bay County line, east of Point Washington State Forest, south of State Road 20 and Black Creek Road, and north of Highway 98, except for the water sound DRI portion, which does extend south of US 98 to 30A. The Long-Term Master Plan received approval at the Technical Review Committee July 2nd, approval from the Planning Commission on August 14th, and on September 9th, this board approved the Long-Term Master Plan for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for state review with the condition that the detailed specific area plans address beach access and transportation to the beach. That condition was incorporated into the plan prior to submittal to DEO on September 22nd. DEO issued the objections, recommendations, and comments, the ORC report, on December 23rd. The ORC report objections focused on providing additional clarity for the recreation, open space, and village centers land uses, implementation of transit within the plan, identification of future transportation facilities, the utility service areas, and uses that did not require specific DSAP approval. The ORC report also included some additional language to help firm up some of the language, such as changing "shoulds" to "shallows" and removing phrases like "where appropriate" within the language, so just strengthening the regulatory language there. The applicant and staff worked in coordination with DEO to address the objections outlined in the ORC report. And the master plan before you tonight does include revisions addressing all of those ORC report objections. And the Long-Term Master Plan map of the land uses has not changed, and Section 4 of the addendum that was provided to you did outline the highlights of the Conference of Plan language changes, and Section 5 is actually a clean copy of the new language being proposed. We did receive a public comment on May 6th, which was the day after the books went out. I did provide a copy to you on this evening for you to read. That was from Mr. Wimmer of the, let's see, the Defenders of Wildlife. And this proposal does meet the requirements of Florida statutes as well as the Walton County Conference of Plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have of staff, and the applicant is here, of course, to address any questions you have for them as well.
Mr. Gonzalez, any comments you'd like to make first?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and consideration, as always. I'm George Gonzalez with the St. Joe Company. It's been a long process. We started the public outreach program in the early fall of 2013. We haven't stopped. We even had a presentation a little bit over a week ago. We've had dozens of open houses, workshops, presentations to civic groups. We have, since your transmittal hearing, as Tim mentioned, we have spent time with state agencies, working through all the issues. We feel very comfortable that we've addressed the state issues. We'd like to thank your staff for engaging in that process. They worked very hard with us to work through the state issues. And as a reminder, what's in front of you tonight is a planning framework. It's a long-range planning framework. It doesn't authorize us to move forward with development immediately. We still have to come back and come in front of this board with detailed specific area plans with a higher level of specificity before we can even think about PUDs and development orders. Other than that, again, appreciate your time, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, Mr. Chapman?
George, I just want to ask, this letter that was presented to us from the Defenders of Wildlife, have you had a chance to read it yet?
I have. In the perspective we have on the letter, and we have spoken with him and Mr. Wimmer, the sector plan proposes a 53,000-acre conservation framework, which is a pretty extensive framework, and we're pretty proud of that. If there are opportunities to refine that when we do detail-specific area plans to improve connectivity, we're very willing to do that. To us, that's in the next step. It's difficult to get in that level of detail at the 40,000-foot level. So we feel comfortable with our conservation framework, and we're very willing to refine it when we get into the detail-specific area plans.
Thank you. Any other board questions?
Yeah, one of the questions I have is that, let's see, it'd be on page 31 and 32 of the amendments, particularly addressing the traffic and the capacities and the, there's a statement in here that says, under number five, that a binding agreement to pay for or construct a proportionate fair share of a required improvements to satisfy concurrency will be executed. What, how does, how does our traffic study coming up, how would that affect this, and how would, if we adopt impact fees versus prop share funds, how will all of that work with this particular comp plan policy that we would be adopting with the sector plan?
I would suggest that whenever the more specific, and probably even below the DSAP, the development order stage is what would be in effect at that time would govern. Would you agree with that?
I agree, but I understand--
I think the second part of your question is, would we have to go back and amend this if we do impact fees? And I think we would, but I don't know that you guys are going to, these folks are going to have a big problem with us asking for that amendment. I just don't see that--
I don't think we would.
Well, currently, we don't have them, so we couldn't put them in this plan, but if we do have them, we would have to go back and amend the plan.
And I agree with Mr. Jones, too, that concurrency will be at the DSAP level, which we'll focus on that at that time.
Okay. Okay. Then, the 1 through 4, the situations in which you can proceed with development, if the, number one, if they're in place at the time, if will be in place when the impacts occur or under construction at the time a permit is issued, or that they're scheduled to be in place not more than five years. I think that's one of the, that's one of the issues I think I have with putting roadway improvements off down the road for five years after the project's approved because the impacts obviously are occurring when that actually is, is being built. So how would y'all address that as far as building the facilities concurrent with your impacts?
And first of all, that language that you just read, Commissioner, is straight from Chapter 163.
Right, I know, I know. And I don't like that either, but--
Just wanted to make sure you didn't think that we were trying to get away with something--
No, no, no. I knew it was in there, and we've looked at that in the county level, and, you know, with the things we're dealing with now, five years is just, you know, it's almost light years out there getting things done to accommodate the capacities that we're looking at.
Absolutely. And one of the, one of many unique opportunities that this process affords the county is that when we get into the DSAP phase, we'll have an ability to look at the timing of infrastructure in a much broader way than you typically do with a development order.
Okay.
Because when you have a development order, it's kind of at the last second, and they're ready to move forward with development. At the DSAP stage, which was pretty typical in other sector plans in the state, you can incorporate a phasing component to the timing of infrastructure.
Okay.
So the infrastructure won't be in arrears with the development.
Right, right. I think that's, that's just critical in our area now.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then the Commissioners, before we take public comments?
I just have one question for staff. The Chapter 70 dispute resolution, was that required by DEO? I didn't remember it being in the original plan. I just wondered if they required it.
It was in the original plan.
It was, okay. Well, then I'm mistaken.
Gentlemen in the back, leave it's comments. Sir, did you want him to comment?
My name is Donnie Bush. I'm from Bruce. And I have an issue with your Bay Walton Sector Plan because it doesn't address bald eagle population or the nesting bird populations in the Chautauqua River Basin. Now, the Migratory Bird Act protects all those birds. Now, you're not supposed to have any development or any disturbing of habitat within four miles of any nesting site. Yet right here, and I got this today-- Yet right here, and I got this today. Those pictures you're about to see were taken inlet beach, Chautauqua River, in the Bruce area. I took pictures that still feel road, but all the trees have been cut down for 18 miles. Now, who authorized the cutting of these trees within nesting bird sites? This violates the Migratory Bird Act. I mean, if there's, I can understand there being development, but you can't clear-cut for 18 miles. These birds have got to be protected, they've got to go somewheres. This is part of the migratory route for them. They have no other option. Now, if they're protected, how is, y'all gonna, how is this plan going to affect them? I mean, there's numerous threatened and endangered species that live in this area. The gopher tortoise, Florida gopher tortoise. Preliminary research by me indicates that its demise and is dying off of it correlates with the use of these bulldozers and the choppers they use to ground this land up. The gopher tortoise's top speed is about a mile an hour. A bulldozer moves at 6. It's fairly simple. Now, the bald eagle's nest, you'll see there's documented bald eagle nests at the mouth of the river. There's also osprey nests, there's crane nests, there's abyss nests. And they're documented by the Department of Interior, Fish and Wildlife. Now, all these endangered species, where are they going to go to? Is there any kind of mitigation whatsoever? You going to move them somewheres, and if so, where? The bald eagle's nest at the mouth of the river is one of the largest in the South. Now, I have pictures of, in there of one bald eagle that was taken at water sound, and it shows an immature bald eagle right above it. So they are mating here. The other pair is at inlet beach, in those tall pines. They need those pines. They need these trees. They also need all this old area to hunt with. I mean, if you build all this up, where they going to hunt? Where they going to live? This issue has not been addressed, and I'd like to see it addressed. It's in y'all's ballpark for now. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, could I comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate the Citizens' comments, and I can assure you that we're extremely familiar with all the federal and state regulations as it relates to endangered species. We work very closely with the US Fish and Wildlife Service and the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and no action that you'll take tonight in any way trumps, or exempts, or supersedes any of those regulations. In fact, our approach to environmental permitting is pretty unique. We don't do a typical ad hoc project-by-project permit process. We don't think that's the right way to approach it. What we typically engage in is ecosystem management agreements with all the federal and state agencies, because we deal with conservation in a broad, in a broad way. We have 53,000 acres of conservation. Within it, we have a devil swamp mitigation bank. So the framework that we have for conservation is far ahead of what the typical project-by-project approach is. And again, in no way is your action today going to trump any of those regulations. We understand them, we'll work with them, and we will, we'll work with the stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bush, be brief. Be brief.
Okay. To build in this area requires a permit from the Department of Interior. Now, as far as I know, there's no permit been applied for and received for. Thank you.
We're not at that stage yet, are we? No, okay. Any other public comments? Yes, sir, come on.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Tom Blackshear. I work with the school district. Ms. Anderson asked me to speak to you tonight. I've reviewed the textual amendments, and under general strategy, there's one bulleted item that reads, and that's on page 5 of your resolution, that reads, "Work with the Walton County School Board to coordinate location of future needed educational facilities." We've been talking to St. Joe for about a year. They've been extremely willing to speak to us, and in fact, we're going to have a follow-up meeting here fairly soon, in order just to look for a site for a future school. So, anyway, the school district looks forward to working with St. Joe, and just glad to see this thing happen.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, wishes of the board.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is Stonegate Large-Scale Amendment, 19.63 acres on west, north of West Hewitt Road. I'll ask Tim Brown to come up and brief the commission.
Good evening, Tim Brown with Planning and Development. This is a large-scale amendment request to change 19.63 acres from residential 2 to 1 to small neighborhood. The commission last saw this on October 12th, 2014. It came before the board, but there was no official action taken. So the county attorney's office made a ruling that they could bring this back at any time, so they're back tonight. This is a transmittal hearing for this large-scale amendment. Staff finds that this proposed amendment to the Conference of Plan Future Land Use Map provides for an orderly and logical development pattern in the neighborhood and does not contravene the goals, objectives, and policies of the Walton County Conference of Plan.
I'll take any questions you may have.
It's my understanding, now, you've got in here that the Planning Commission.
Yes, the Planning Commission, I did leave that out. They voted 4 to 1 to recommend denial of the request.
What was, what was their conversation, or their, the, the?
The biggest part was stormwater. There was a gentleman that came and talked at length at that meeting about how the stormwater from this property affects him, but the stormwater runs the other way. The stormwater from this project goes away from his property, but he talked at length at the Planning Commission meeting about the stormwater for this, for this project, and the applicant is prepared to address that issue, how they're going to work the stormwater on this property. But that was the big issue at the Planning Commission.
The small neighborhood, I thought small neighborhood allowed up to 10 units per acre, but this is only 8. Is that, is that correct?
Well, I think they're wanting 8. That's what they're shooting for, is 8. Small neighborhood has a base density of, I believe it's 4, and then you, through bonus, you can get up to 10, but they're wanting, they're shooting for 8.
Okay, but this, this amendment would, how many would this amendment allow? How many would it allow this small neighborhood?
Well, if you went with 10, and I'm not sure you can get there, but if you went with 10, you'd be looking at 191 units.
Right, but I mean, if this is approved, how many units could they build based on the land use?
191, if they could get to 10. I'm not sure they have enough land for the infrastructure and the stormwater, but I mean, if it allows for 10, it's at 100, it's 19.63 acres, that would give them 191 units. Now, can they physically build that many? I don't think so.
Okay, but, but under page 3 of 5, it says, requesting to change the small neighborhood category allows a maximum of 8 dwelling units per acre. But, but it really allows up to 10 dwelling units per acre, so that's an incorrect statement.
Yeah, that came from the school board. That's, that's the school board's comment. I copied it in there verbatim.
Okay, I got you, yeah, I see it under school concurrency. Okay, okay, so really, basically, they could put up to 10 units per acre if they can get, if they can pay it or.
Yes, that's, yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to get to. Okay, and the wetlands, have they got, preserve the wetlands, are they going to buy them out?
I think the plan, I mean, you'll need to ask the applicant, but I think they're planning on preserving the wetlands. I don't think they're going to impact, I may be wrong, but I don't think they're going to impact the wetlands.
I'd like to hear what the answer is with regard to the stormwater issue that was flowing the wrong way. What was the resolution on that?
And what is that, is that a mosquito ditch that runs through the middle of the area?
It's a FDOT drainage from 98.
Okay. So it's a mosquito ditch or is it a FDOT drainage?
It used to be a FDOT dish, it's now a mosquito.
Good evening, I'm Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering. I actually was not here when the Planning Commission heard this, but I have heard some of the arguments associated with stormwater, and I'm very familiar with the property. We actually worked with Mr. Mitchell probably back in 2004 or 2005 on a development order for this site, for a, for just a single-family residential subdivision. But basically, as you can see, the property is here, this is the Walmart area, the apartments are now over here that are built, but this is the property. I think some of the concerns were from this neighborhood that's adjacent here, but if you look at the contours for this area on the quad maps and in the LiDAR information cam, it actually flows to the north towards the bay, and so this property is a, is a third to lower than the property here. And really, the only way that they could negatively impact the properties to the, to the south would be if they affected the conveyance in the ditch, which there obviously would be no intentions to do that at the time. From a stormwater management perspective, I would anticipate that this would be a, probably a wet detention system in this location, and more than likely, based on the county's criteria that they're implementing now for stormwater management, the site would probably have to be designed for the 100-year event, because it has a mosquito control ditch on it. The wetland area that you were asking about really is just the mosquito control ditch, the rest of the property, I believe, is dry, so.
So all that hatched area is not wetlands?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. It's just, just the mosquito control ditch.
What about the blue areas?
The, actually, according to the environmental assessment, which was done by Pat Emhoff, the site is dry except for the ditch that runs through the middle. And we actually have got permits to cross the ditch previously, and so that's been vetted by the DEP and the Corps.
But this has got 24 acres of wetlands, so where are those?
It's the ditch, the width of the ditch across the, across the property.
So this is the ditch?
Yes, ma'am.
And then it was taken out of the 100-year flood via a lawn?
Yes, ma'am.
And so what is the elevation of the site?
It ranges from probably around 12 at the highest point to around 10 at the edges of the ditch, and then obviously, the ditch bottom is lower.
Okay, so, so I think what we need to worry about is a project coming and building up higher than that, and then, of course, it's different, so probably this, I'm looking at this map, there's an elevation 5 to the south of this, there's an elevation 10 to the north of it, so it looks like. What, what is the wide away width on where you live?
I believe it's 66 feet, the old government line width.
So you weren't the engineer with the, with the, with the commission, or you just weren't here?
No, ma'am, I wasn't. They called me in afterwards when some of the questions came up regarding stormwater.
Oh, okay. Well, I think one of the issues, too, is, is it doesn't let me concurrency the California for prop share contribution, mitigate concurrency on US 98, and once again, there's no plan to mitigate the impacts. There's none in the CIP, there's none planned by Walton County that can pay into the prop share fund, but traffic still runs on to West Hewitt and 98, especially in that area. And I think that's, my concern is, is the density on this, the small neighborhood density that 10 units per acre, in addition to all the vested views that's in that topsoil, topsoil development. So I see major traffic problems with West Hewitt and for that intersection there. So, and I don't see any, any mitigation, any, any method that our engineers have shown us, or anybody has shown us of how, how we're going to deal with this. So you're, you know, if you look at, if you look at this, if you look at what's already vested in the topsoil area, which is right down the street, it's 308,000 square feet of retail, 5,000 square feet of office, 310 home to family, 100,000 single, senior, and 110 assisted living units. I would be, I would be, we're changing it to something, but I don't think I, I don't agree with the small neighborhood. I think that's too intense for this particular area.
Dana may want to add something to this, but I just, just to add a little bit to the answer that Tim gave, I think the base density for small neighborhood, if it were approved, is actually 4 units per acre. You can get up to 10 units per acre by going through a density bonus point schedule. It's a very difficult schedule to meet to get additional density bonus points, especially on a 20-acre piece of property. However, you know, that's the process that has to be done at development order stage, but base density is actually 4, so.
Is, is the, is the 39 unit subdivision called Stonegate, is that still, is the development order for that still good, still?
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure. No, ma'am, I, it actually, I don't think ever really went to permit phase, but it got a final order before the board.
Before we go, Mr. Matthews, did you want to address any of that part?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Pope has a few comments, and Mr. Mitchell, the property owner, and then I could wrap up, and I think I can answer Ms. Meadows' question or at least provide some additional information.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last name.
Bill Pope, P-O-P-E, 118 Rue Martine, Miramar Beach. Really, Scott has covered a lot of things I was going to talk about, but this, several things came up during the Planning Commission and probably the last commission meeting. And one, that was the drainage. We're just too soon to be there. We feel we can handle that, we promised to use the 100-year flood plane, but at the Planning Commission, probably as naive as we were, we went in right after the storms in April, and it was a hot issue. It probably shouldn't have been discussed at that point, drainage, because we're just not there. We don't even have the, we don't even have a plan or a zoning designation. So the drainage is something that you will have approval rights over when it comes to the development order for the property. The other issue that seems to keep coming up is that everybody goes to the high end of small neighborhood 10. I don't know of anybody that's ever achieved 10 in Walton County. It's just near impossible, even if you have a large piece of property, to increase it. So what we had promised in willing to do that is that we would, we would cap ourselves from 4 to 6, if we could get the density bonus points that we needed for the 6. So, but again, I guess the last thing that I keep reiterating is that, again, Walton County has no mechanism for medium density. You're either low, or you're high. Right above us, right adjacent to our property almost, is 21 units per acre. That's the senior living, that's the Terramar, there's proposed another senior living. So this, the medium density, we just don't have a transition from high density to low density. And we felt that the small neighborhood gave us the ability to make that transition in the neighborhood of West Hewitt. So we would go, we would probably be the medium density, there are some other densities just below us of 4 already, 6, actually, there's some infill at 6, and then we would go down to what I call estate, single, single-family estate lots. But that's the, I just don't know how, all we want is the ability to have small neighborhood and come in and prove to you that, that what we're saying, we can do. And you still have all approval rights. All we're asking for is to redesignate the property to small neighborhood. I really, and as I said, the other thing has been addressed already, the drainage. It was just a misnomer at the time, it went the wrong, the people that came in were misinformed. One thing Scott hasn't mentioned, that since then, the drainage ditch has been cleaned up, pipes replaced, it did, it did cause that. Our coming in caused the neighborhood to get that all effectuated and repaired, so the drainage is better than it's ever been, so.
I got a question. You're quoted as saying at the Planning Commission that the developer's looking at more senior citizen housing, is that correct?
We talked about that was one of the possibilities. At 4... At four to six senior housing, and we had looked at several options, but senior housing is something that, again, is really well-needed in Walton County. And we're near the hospital, we're near shopping, and even future shopping that St. Joe has at the eastern corner, southeastern corner of West Hewitt. So it lends itself to ideal. If anybody knows about senior housing, it's not a traffic issue. They don't have cars, they don't come and go like an apartment complex does, like Terramar. So it's, and again, we would get into that. We're more than happy, when we propose an exact plan, we would give you our traffic studies, and we would do traffic studies based on that plan. But it would be far less than the peak hours that would come with an apartment complex.
Well, that's not entirely correct, because my neighbor is just, is moving into that assisted living, and he has a car, and they do have cars there. They do allow you to drive there if you're of the age that you can drive. So it's not just a bunch of people without cars there. But that's just for the record, that, you know, there is traffic associated with that. You've got staff, you've got people who live here that have cars, plus you have visitors and such. So, you know, there is some traffic that's, the only thing about it is small neighborhood allows up to ten with density bonus. You can't put a cap on land use as we know, you know, as we know. That's why we need zoning, so that we can have a subcategory of small neighborhood, which would say, okay, we'll give you six, and you can build this, and here's what your classifications would be. So that's the issue here, is that we can't require you to put any more drainage in there than what the code requires. So once it's approved, you know, it's pretty much a done deal. Because, you know, if you put the drainage in there that meets code, then we have to approve it. If you meet the land use and you can get up to ten, we have to basically approve it, as the attorneys will tell you. So anyway, that's my, that's my, was there any other zoning, I mean, land use category ever considered for this site, Wayne, or planning?
Commissioner, that was their request. I don't recall any others being discussed. Tim, do you recall anything else?
Let me, one last thing, and no disrespect, Ms. Meadows, drainage is not a problem. Maybe even with the current, the current rules, and we're willing to exceed that to the hundred-year, but it is just not an issue on this property, so it keeps coming up. It's just not true. The, and again, the density, we're not, I just don't know how anybody can ever achieve ten on twenty acres. Can, we looked at the formula, we couldn't even achieve seven or eight with the current formula on the property. So.
Yeah. Is this, Wayne, do y'all know if, is this one in one of the drainage areas that we've, that we had to study, that we had flooding out there during the last storms?
Commissioner Meadows, I'm not sure of that. Something we can check into, that's something I'm not, I'm not sure of.
Because everybody says drainage isn't a problem, but we realized last summer that drainage is a huge problem.
Right.
Anytime you have wetlands, ditches, low-lying areas close to the bay, you have issues, so.
That's something we can certainly check out, if you'd like us to. We could get the information back to you at the next board meeting. I do recall from the planning commission meeting that drainage was the overriding concern for this project.
Well, I'm trying to determine what those streets to the east are, because we have, there was some flooding out there. But anyway, that's my issue with the small neighborhood densities, is I think it.
Commissioner, it's in the interest of full disclosure, many years ago, I represented the owner of this property on something wholly and completely, it was different, but I just want to let you know, he was a long, many years ago, former client. Again, nothing to do with this project, and nothing to do with land development, in fact.
Come in, Mr. Chairman. Please come in.
Just along with Commissioner Meadows' thoughts, remember, this is a land use change, and whatever rights come with that new land use are with that property. These folks may or may not ultimately be the developer, and certainly, they're honorable people, and I believe that. But if they had opportunity to sell it, at a nice profit, and you're dealing with someone that wasn't here involved in this discussion.
Commissioner, my name's Elliot Mitchell.
I'm the owner of the property.
Spell your last name for the record.
Mitchell, M I T C H E L L.
Thank you.
Marked Wright, and thank you for the comments. We, I've been a developer, I don't know a lot of you people, because I've lived here the last several years, lived in Sarasota. I've been a developer in this county for thirty years. I've built condos across the street from Golf Place, next door to Rosemary Beach, the condos there, Sunset Beach across from Seacrest Beach, the villas at Santa Rosa Beach in the middle of Seagrove, Seaview Villas in the middle of Seagrove. I've never been called before the public for any wrongdoing. I've never asked for a variance. I've gone with the code on everything I've ever done. And my property in West Hewitt, it's necessary for me to change what I intended to do, which was to build four thousand square foot houses on half-acre lots, very low density. There are none in the county. They don't build half-acre lots with four thousand square foot houses anymore. There's not a market for that. I can't build those houses. So I have to look at alternatives, as D R Horton and Watercolors and all the other people are doing. That's what necessitated us revisiting this. But for clarification, I originally applied for small neighborhood in two thousand and seven as part of the year amendment, and I didn't make the cutoff, and so we had to wait a year or two after the year amendment went in before we got back in the queue. We discovered at that time that we didn't qualify for small neighborhood. We didn't even know it, been working on it for a couple of years, and we didn't know it. And staff told us, you just don't qualify. And they told us why, and we accepted that. Two years ago, we discovered that D O T had made some changes in their road systems and the things that they do generally when censuses are done. And we were advised by staff that we could go through a process to reclassify West Hewitt Road, and we asked what that entailed, and they joined us with East Hewitt Road and Churchill Bayou to change those through this commission, which we brought to you and you approved it, to minor connectors. And then it went to the state, and the state approved it and sent it back to you. We then regrouped with staff and said, are we now eligible? And they said, yes, you are. And here's the process that you have to go through. From that day until today, all we ever asked for was the opportunity to develop our property in the same way we always have, following all the zoning requirements, anything that's required of us, we would do. And we still are willing to do that. We will never, and we've made it very clear, we are not interested in twenty-two units per acre, or ten units per acre, or eight units per acre. We said in our last meeting, we would accept six per acre, and whether you can legally accept that from us or not, it would be pretty dumb of us to tell you we were willing to do that, and you approved small neighborhood, and then we come back with an application for ten. We're never going to do that. We own the property, we would just be liars. We're not going to do that. I can tell you that we have, we have no, we are not in flood zone. We have one quarter of one acre of wetlands, which is the mosquito ditch. We have no environmental issues. Several years ago, the staff walked the entire property and even waived the twenty-five-foot setback to fifteen because there were no environmental species that qualified in that area. So we did all the things that we needed to do. When we were asked what we expected to do with the property, what we expected to do with the property is, we expected to put four homes per acre on about fifteen of the acres, and an assisted living facility on the street front, or a childcare center or something of that nature. I think we could go up to ten percent. That was our first thought, and we put very detailed plans together, and sixty percent of our property would be vacant. We had retention ponds as big as a lake, and probably still would in the future. I think the misconception has been, we went through two years and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to get that road reclassified. We worked with the staff diligently, as we always have. We had a great relationship with them. We have a great relationship with them today. One person showed up two weeks after a five-hundred-year flood and made all these accusations about our property, which was not true. And from that day forward, it's been a real struggle for us. The only thing we're asking you to do is give us the opportunity to go out and research the best uses for our property as a small neighborhood development. We will come back to you with all the things that you require, all the engineering studies, where the drainage is going to be, how it's going to be contained, all the soil samples, windstorm calculations, everything that you require of us, and you will say yes, no, or you need to modify it. And we will do exactly what you ask us to do. We're not trying to hide anything. We haven't been doing that for thirty years. My partner and I have invested in this community for thirty years. We've contributed to virtually everything here. The Camel Club down the street here on West Hewitt Road, which is an alcohol and drug facility. We initiated the original work with Van Ness on that ten years ago. It's a half-million-dollar facility, it's paid for itself. The Northwest Florida Valet, the Children's Advocacy, we've been partners in this county. We're the only taxpayers on West Hewitt Road. We're not Walmart, we're not Murphy Oil, we're not three hundred and eighty-five, twenty-two, you know, units per acre apartment complex, we're not a seventy-eight-unit senior living facility that's owned, we're taxpayers. We've lived here for thirty years, and we've contributed. We only want the opportunity to go investigate the best use of this property and come back to you, and we'll respect whatever decision you give us.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Matthews, you said you wanted to wrap this in. Go ahead.
I stand in a unique position because I live on this road. I live Hewitt Bayou. If you go down West Hewitt Road from the Walmart and go to the very end, and then the road makes a nine-degree bend to the right, as we call it, the cut-through road east to it, you keep on going straight, and that's where I live. And I've lived there since nineteen eighty-six. The properties that I live on and my neighbors are RP, and that's what it's been. The, we had a dirt road. We had no water and sewer. All this area, in that area, was two-to-one CR, and all down West Hewitt Road and East Hewitt, for that matter, because of this low density, and it wasn't developed, as y'all remember, for those of you who were here in the early eighties. And the property along West Hewitt started changing, I believe it was in the mid-nineties, early nineties is when they, the county paved the road. And when paved the road, it made a difference. And Commissioner Meadows, just so you know, based on the county's functional reclassification study and the county's approval, this commission's approval of the L S A for that back in January of two thousand and fourteen, it shows that West Hewitt is a twenty-two-foot asphalt roadway with a sixty-six-foot right-of-way. But that, as you can imagine, like any undeveloped or rural areas, once you put a road in, that makes a change, and makes it more attractive for people that don't like driving on rutted clay. And then regional put in water and sewer all the way down West Hewitt. That made a big change. And so what's happened is, and of course, the purpose of land use changes in the county, which is typical, is that when you have a transition or a change in demand and living patterns that you provide for this process of a large-scale amendment, the properties that are literally adjacent to mine within about maybe a hundred yards, even though everything's RP there, on that area, the county approved a large-scale amendment for a neighborhood infill for up to eight units an acre. That's a project called Hidden Harbor that exists today. Within probably three hundred yards of my house along the bayou, right across from the bayou, Mr. Kramer owns one point two acres, and he got his change from RP to a neighborhood infill. He hasn't built anything on it, but it has been approved for that. Within a quarter of a mile of the project is Eagle's Landing, which Mr. Benezi got approved as a T D N. And for those of you who've been down there, you know that it's a mixed-use project of single-family homes and apartments, as well as a restaurant that is there. You've got the, of course, the topsoil West Pudd that St. Joe was approved for. I won't go with all the details of all the intensity and density of use that's been approved. You've heard that, it's in the staff report. That property actually abuts CR two-to-one. And the only CR two-to-one left is Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Clark's property, which is that twenty-acre piece that we've been talking about. And then the properties across the street on West Hewitt, on the east side, there's about six feet of roads that are dead-end roads that are about a thousand feet long, and there's single-family homes and mobile homes in that area. But other than that, the only undeveloped parcel on West Hewitt Road, other than ones that I've described to you, is all stayed on conservation land, other than this twenty-acre piece. This piece, Mr. Mitchell gave you a brief description about when they bought the property and they, at the economy at the time, before RealEstate.com ended. But before that, he thought that larger estate homes might be more attractive. And when he got his thirty-nine lot, single-family home subdivision approved by the county and the D O back then, of course, y'all know, right after that, market dropped and for a number of years. And now, the development community is looking at what is the demand out there, what is the need by the public, and where they want to live, and what type of accommodations they want to live in. The, what we call mid-price homes in the three hundred, three fifty, four hundred on up to, you know, eight hundred thousand, that market doesn't exist in South Walton today, and that doesn't appear to be, at least, the trend on what people are wanting. And so in two thousand, not long, a couple of years ago, they applied for a L S A for a small neighborhood. After they filed the request and meeting with staff, they realized they did not meet the conditions for a small neighborhood, because West Hewitt was designated as a local road. And East Hewitt was designated as a local road. And the county embarked on a analysis and investigation of both West Hewitt, East Hewitt, the north part of three ninety-three, and that part of Church Bayou Road. These are all a little bit east of West Hewitt, for those of you that don't know South Walton real well. And the county was, in conjunction, working with the state F D O T and their guidelines, were looking to change some of the classification, change the classifications on those four roads in particular. And I find that the, and I've got a copy of the staff's report that was approved by the board on January fourteenth of fourteen, on dealing with this whole functional reclassification. And the, and I'll read a couple of parts to you here in a minute. The, one of the purposes was, is that because of the way that local roads were classified, the county had not, did not have a quote definition for a collector road. And because of F D O T standards, it did have definitions. And because of the West Pudd project, and with the urbanizing of that whole area, not just there, but just a mile and a half, you know, west of there is Sacred Heart Hospital and Trustmark Bank and Public and Grandville of our. And all that, that the county went through this study to determine that this is becoming a more urbanized area. And therefore, we needed to change the classifications of these roads, and in particular, West Hewitt and East Hewitt and Church Bayou Road, to turn them into a collector road. And one of the reasons that were promoted, I want to, this is on page eight of twelve of that staff report. It says, based on the guidance documents, the existing classification of roadways in South Walton County were reviewed based on the following parameters. One, recent development activity. Two, future land use. Three, traffic volume. Four, network continuity. And five, designation on the future roadway functional classification map. And then they. And then they go on and describe on page 9 of 12 that east and west Hewitt roads function as minor collectors. This is under the FDOT guidelines. Distributing traffic associated with the Topsail West Plan Unit Development and the developing area to the north goes on and says, and they have some tables, and in the tables, they talk about why, what would be one of the reasons that you would change, you know, a classification, not just because of location, not just because of functionality, but because of emerging transition and developing patterns and increased density. And they actually put in there that the functional classification amendments create the opportunity for land use designations through a large- or small-scale amendment. And they specifically, for West Hewitt, designate Small Neighborhood, Coastal Village 1, Neighborhood Commercial, Business Park, and Light Industrial. So clearly, it was contemplated by staff and at least by the commission, you know, on a broader sense, not on a specific project sense, that by doing this, that would encourage potentially landowners to seek a large- or small-scale amendment because of this transitioning area. You basically go on from 22, you know, units, 21, 22 units an acre, you know, right there at the mouth of West Hewitt, of the Topsail Park, then you go up to 2:1 per acre, then you go up to RP, then you got neighborhood infill, then you got TDN. All this is within a mile of each other, 1.2 miles. And clearly, without, the state's not going to develop their conservation lands. And I don't, my recollection is, in reading the settlement agreement between the county and St. Joe and DCA at the time, that the state cannot develop those conservation lands on West Hewitt without the signatory authority on all three parties of that agreement. I think the, one of the things is, when the application process and your own comp plan and Land Development Code, to even seek a large-scale amendment, would require the applicant to demonstrate that, number one, that their request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that it's consistent with the Land Development Code, that it's compatible with the neighborhood, and that there's about a 30-page report in your pack, it should be in your package, which was prepared by Wendy Gray, a land planner out of Tallahassee, that was presented or filed, I think it was last summer. And she addresses every single provision, I will not bore you with the detail, but every single provision of our comp plan and our LDC and compatibility requirements to show that we meet all those things for the granting of a large-scale amendment. There is nothing in the record or that was filed with the county that would disagree with that. I'd just like to finish up. As a person that lives there on West Hewitt, the, and I was there during, I mean, April 29th through May 5th was a pretty bad time for Walton County, especially those of us that live in South Walton, in any kind of areas that, I mean, I live on nine-foot elevations, and yet you still got water running off the state property down through the streets. I mean, we looked at several potential flooding cases, and all the engineers I've talked to, I think the lowest one said it was a 200-year storm event, and most of them said it was higher than that. You know, hopefully, you know, we won't have those in the future, but that's something that we can't predict for. And again, this is not a project-specific request tonight. As y'all know, any kind of major development order application process is a lengthy process in dealing with all state, local, and federal permit requirements, all the experts and engineers and consultants that have to, and working with staff. And I've known Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Clark for many, many years, and when they say that they don't ask for branches and they'll do what the county requires, that's exactly what they'll do. But y'all do get to make the decision on that. Even though the small neighborhood may, may allow you to seek in a development order process something other than four units an acre, there is no guarantee. The only thing that category requires is four units an acre, if you have water and sewer, which we do. And this is found, again, this is attached to Ms. Gray's report. She actually attaches the entire Exhibit 1, Future Land Use Element Policy L-1.3.4, but it gives you the small neighborhood criteria and then for the density points. And I'm just going to, I'm not going to read them all, but I'm just going to hit the highlight. To even apply for density points to exceed four units an acre in the development order process, you know, one of them is habitat protection or habitat enhancements, which exceeds the minimum standards through innovative mitigation, protection, or enhancement measures. One is dedicating roadways and creating roadway improvements to adjacent roadways. Greenway corridors, where you set aside, you know, up to a half acres for one point, you know, for various greenway corridors. Same thing dealing with wildlife preservation and wildlife lines, et cetera. The bottom line is that it is, to even meet any of these criteria, you would get to say yes or no. Do you or do you not meet those? That's what staff recommendations for you and the county commission in the DO process. We have looked at this property, just by constrained with .24 acres out of 20 acres being wetlands and a mosquito ditch running through it, is we know that there's no way you can get, I think it was 6.3 units an acre max, assuming that we could meet several of these density bonus points. But we don't have the right to do that. All we have the right to do, if you approve this, is four units an acre, and we're required to go back to this commission for any and all technical requirements, including any kind of a density enhancement. So I would just ask you, I know that they've been working on this for several years. I think that the change, it's a transitioning area. And I think asking for the opportunity to at least come back to you in the future at some point in time with a site-specific project would be fair and reasonable. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Mark, I want to ask you one more time. If we approved it tonight and it comes back to us, can we limit the number of units at that time?
Well, it's a little bit of a loaded question, but you can only limit the use or the number of units per acre that they're allowed to have. You can't, if they're, and I'm speaking hypothetically, but if they meet the density bonus points, which would be very difficult, if they meet the density bonus points and they're allowed to do that, then you couldn't reduce. In other words, or if they're allowed four and they want to build four, and they meet all the other criteria in the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code, then you have to give them four.
I understand.
But, you know, one of the things, too, that we've talked about is changing our comp plan from low, low density to just increasing the densities everywhere. And if you look at this, you look at this section here on this, on this arrow, you have your commercial, high-density area right around the intersection, which is what planning is all about. And then you have single-family, Moncks Lane, Preston Lane, Starlight Lane, Sierra Court, Lauren Lane, Kimberly Anne Drive, Santa Ana Drive, Foxmire, and Bambi. You have all those single-family, and then everything else is either conservation 2:1 or conservation lands or state or whatever that is. Then you may jump up to the north and do other things. But what you're looking at here is increasing the density in this section from 2:1, which is what, 40 units, 39 units or whatever, to at least 120 units, 120 units. On a 22-foot road, that is, that would never hold that much capacity to begin, I mean, it just won't hold that capacity. So what you're doing is you're jumping over a single-family residential, and you're going in and you're just increasing the densities. That's my problem with it, is that it's a hopscotch over single-family residential. The commercial and high-intensity should be at the intersection. This was land use C 2:1 for a reason, and we made that a collector and another collector, but I'm sure staff didn't promise anybody anything if these roads changed to collector roads, just that you would have the ability to come in and apply. So my problem with it is the densities just plopped right down in that area, next to all these single-family homes, the traffic associated with it, the, just the number of units that you would, that you would be able to get in there, which they have a little drawing in here, which shows 100, I think it shows 140 units that they, you know, that they included in the drawing. It does have a lot of retention, but it's 140 units, and it would have to be multifamily. So, you know, to me, it just, it doesn't, it's not a good, it's one of the things that we said we didn't want to do, is keep increasing the intensity, exacerbating the traffic issues, and of course, the flooding. Because I do know Bambi is one of the roads that we had trouble with. One of the things that I would like to add, to tack onto this, is maybe something that we could do with these types of issues is adopt an ordinance that establishes zoning in general. We establish zoning. And when we review these kinds of things, we actually assign them, when we approve the land use, we actually assign them a zoning category, which allows them up to a certain number of units with some other criteria, open space and such and such, thereby creating the ability to do zoning, but the ability to not have to go through and rezone everything, but the ability to place zoning on certain parcels of land as they come through that would answer the dilemma that we have of these land use categories that are just so broad and include so much that we have no idea what we're approving at that time. And so that, I don't know if that's possible, Mark. I don't know if that's something we can do, but it may be too late for this one, but...
Yes, we could rewrite. It would be, it would be an undertaking, but we could rewrite and change how we do future land use from categories to actual zoned parcels. Now, one of the problems...
It would still be, it would still be small neighborhood.
Oh, sure.
It would be small neighborhood, but underneath it would be a zoning category of maybe multifamily units up to six or whatever.
The problem becomes, and it's doable, don't get me, I don't want to say it's not doable, but the problem becomes into what's vested and what's not vested currently. You have to go through each parcel and make sure that the land use is there, that you can't, without notice and opportunity to be heard, decrease their current land use ability. And it's doable.
But you would only do it on pieces that were asking for increases.
Are you talking, well, I'm a little concerned that might be spot zoning, but I think if you're going to do it, you could do it by area versus this parcel, this parcel.
Well, you know, and that would systematically institute zoning and systematically institute, because if these guys want to do something on their land and its seats are 2:1, and they want up to, you know, whatever it is, small neighborhood, the only way to fix that is to institute zoning, and if we could do it...
Of parcels.
From our perspective, we would much prefer that, trust me. It's 10 times more predictable and from our perspective.
I just want to clarify, if I may, a couple of things. Ms. Meadows, we, this category only guarantees four units an acre. That's it. And I didn't read them all, and I will if you want, but there's eight different ways you can get dump bonus density. Every single one of those gives wide discretion. It's not like, well, if you, you know, other than the half acre that you give for, you know, for wildlife or something like that, then you get one point. But other than that, it's all discretionary language, and this is all by staff and you. I mean, you get to make those discretionary calls, talk about exceeding this or exceeding that. So it's, we're not asking for 140 units. And by the way, that was given for the last commission meeting because we were told that y'all might want to see, because we heard Planning Commission comments, well, what kind of things might you build out there? So we came up with some drawings. We're not saying that we're going to build an assisted living or a senior housing project or anything else. All we want to do is, the only rights that we have, if you approve this, is four units an acre. That's all we have the right to. We have the right to ask for something else in the future, but we have to come back and ask you. That's the only clarification I wanted to make.
And I understand that, too.
I just wanted to add real quick, I was going to ask a question about some of the drainage basins. I did look it up. I think Tetra Tech was, this was, Hewitt Bayou Basin was one of the ones that Tetra Tech was analyzing. That's, they were studying it, I guess.
Are there other public comments? Yes, sir, come on.
My name is Scott Lemoin. L-E-M-O-I-N-E. I live in the neighborhood directly south and along Preston Path. Just this past April, and I've only lived there for less than a year, just this past April, we had about three inches of rain, and my backyard flooded. I understand, he says he has no flooding on that land, but right now, that land is all soil. It doesn't not rain on his land. The rain goes there. It just soaks in. You lay a bunch of concrete and buildings there, and that water's got to go somewhere pretty quick, which will probably cause it to back up. He says there's no market for 4,000-square-foot, half-acre homes. Well, I bought a 4,000-square-foot, half-acre home in that neighborhood. Could y'all pull up the picture with the flood zones in it? Do y'all have, who is driving that train?
Yeah, there's one over there.
The engineer over there. Thank you. His lawma is dated 2007, and the last paragraph of it states, "When the new National Flood Map is issued, it will supersede this determination." Well, the new flood map is dated 2010, and that's what it lists right here. So that's still flood zone. That's all I really had to say. It's a half, you know, it was designated 2:1. I think it should stay 2:1. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Jenkins, do you care to respond?
Yeah, just to correct one thing. We did get a lawma in 2007. When new maps came out, we did apply to have that reestablished, and it was reestablished. So it's a letter of map amendment, not revision, so the maps don't change, but you get the documentation that removes it from the flood zone.
And that's on file.
And the county has that.
Okay. The fact, though, that it is in one of the drainage districts that we're looking at, would there be any way that we could get the drainage, the drainage report? What category is below small neighborhood? There's neighborhood infill, and there's what else? Wayne, what else is there?
The infill's up to eight, 10. What else? Can you think of anything else?
Low-density residential, it'd be four.
Four. Four units an acre for low-density residential, and that's four, flat four. There's no bonuses for that.
Right.
Okay.
And TND is up to 12.
And...
Infill's up to eight. Really, the only comparable would be low-density residential.
Right, four, yeah. Okay.
Elliot Mitchell again. Actually, a couple of years ago, I did apply for that category of four on East Hewitt Road, and the commission approved it. That's, I think it was a couple of years, maybe one or two years ago. I'll make it easy for the commission. I've spent an absolute fortune in seven years trying to get this approved, and it's just 20 acres of land that we're trying to develop. I believe Planning Commissioner Kramer said at that meeting, would we consider the low-density?
Low-density residential.
Of course, we weren't there because we didn't know all that was going to be going on. One of the neighbors from this same subdivision attended the first meeting that we went to, and he said in that meeting that they were perfectly happy with four. And I even believe, Commissioner Meadows, you indicated you might be willing to consider four.
Yeah, I would.
So we're willing to accept a different category than small neighborhood. We're willing to accept the low-density. We're locked in at four. You can't approve more than that. We can't ask for more for that. I believe that, is that right, Mark?
Yeah, that's correct. There's no bonus or anything.
There's no bonus or anything. It's four. That's the end of the conversation.
Can we do that, Wayne? Can we do that in this hearing? Or I guess I should ask the thing.
I think since it's actually lower density.
It's a less intense use, and we advertise a higher...
A more intense use, yes, ma'am.
Because we need to move on, and we've taken a lot of your time over the last two years and a lot of the staff's time.
We appreciate that, because it is, it's, you know, we've been talking about this dilemma for how long? 10 years?
What's the category?
It's low-density. It's four units of the acre. Low-density, so...
Flat four, there's no bonuses, flat four. Low-density residential.
Low-density residential. So if y'all are ready to entertain a motion, I'll...
Okay, I think somebody was asking to come back up. No? Okay. Seeing no other public, what's wishes of the board?
I'll make that motion that we go ahead and change the land use to low-density residential.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further comments by the board? Seeing none, all does a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion carries.
Mr. Mitchell, the next two items are quasi judicial, but they're being continued. Mark, do you extend it to be sworn in for that?
Yeah, we probably do. Anyone anticipates testifying before the board on the quasi judicial matter scheduled, please stand and raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth.
I do.
And they're both continuances?
Yes. Mr. Mitchell, the first, do we need to go through each one of those?
Motion to continue.
Millington and Comer abandonment.
Let's do one at a time, please.
Motion to continue, number four, to June 9th. We don't have a, we have a chair for...
He's sleeping.
There's a motion in a second.
There's a second? I didn't hear a second. I'm sorry. I apologize. I was waiting for the second.
She's still making quiet.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mitchell, the last item.
Number five, I'm regret that we continue that to June 9th. First point, base one, second.
That's your second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Well, we missed on...